Everyone, Suzanne, if you are on, or I call this meeting to order. Roll call, please Suzanne.
Councilor Bosco. Councilor Hemler.
Here.
Councilor Kiner.
Here.
Mayor Ludwig.
Here.
Councilor Martini.
Here.
Councilor Mueller.
Here.
Councilor Riley.
Here.
Councilor Sparazza.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Here.
Councilor Ungary.
Here.
I'm not sure, is Councilor Bosco absent or here?
He'll be late, but he's not here right now.
Okay, thank you. There's my members present who are absent.
Thanks Suzanne. Again, we welcome our special guest for the night, moving on to item two, BL Companies, Mr. John Ireland, to discuss the final master plan on municipal buildings. Welcome, sir, if you have anything to present. Paul, I'm assuming he'll be able to do it?
Yes, he should be fine.
So, Mr. Ireland, welcome, and you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As it is, my name is John Ireland. I am a licensed architect with BL Companies, and I am located in our Ameritan office. Before I get started, I do want to thank you for inviting me this evening. I know your time is valuable both to me and to BL Companies, and I do appreciate being here. I particularly want to thank Donald Nunes and Jeffrey Leonowitz for their tireless efforts, insights, and assistance in bringing this forth this evening. And then I want to thank Donna Suzak and the entire Joint Facilities Committee, who over the last year and a half have worked closely to provide review guidance, ultimately the approval through their service to the town with what I think was an inclusive approach of ideas and their contacts. So with that, I will get us started and share the screen and put the presentation full screen. Is everybody able to see that?
Yeah, it looks good. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So, the process began about a year and a half ago, and this was the RFP statement that the town put out, that we responded to, interviewed to, and started probably about a month or two after that date in February of 2019. We began with a collective mission statement, and we said that we would establish, prioritize, schedule, and ultimately budget, and we'll talk a little bit more about that, the most cost-effective use of 10 of the town facilities. We would look at improvements for those facilities, or possibly the replacement of those facilities, create a form work for the town's capital plan over the next 10 years. Our mission statement together was further defined to be conscious where there may be a potential increase in the tax burden to the property owners of Enfield, to limit the growth of expenses wherever possible, to enhance, and ultimately to enhance, the town's services through the use of these facilities. So with that, here are the 10 properties we focused on. Starting in the upper left, as you know, Town Hall, Social Services, Buildings and Grounds, and the Thomas Alcorn former school building here. On the east side of the town, the Public Safety or Police Complex, DPW Jablonsky Facilities, and the Enfield Annex. And central to this map, the Central Library, Emergency Medical Services here, and finally Animal Control. So, what we put together, and we're going to focus on the first part, and spend quite a bit of time and focus on Jablonsky and the DPW facility. I'd suggest, if it's all right with you, that we hold the questions till the end. I can navigate back to pieces of the show, or if there's a preference and someone would like to pause, we can pause at any time. Each of the 10 facilities is first put forth based on the recommendations that we collectively came to. It will also include a list of what we call enabling projects, projects that have to occur to allow this facility to move forward. We then have some graphics to show you, and we close each of the facilities with the timeline. So with that, I will look at the recommendations and present those for the Jablonsky facility. The first and probably the most, one of the most important things to do upfront is to combine all seven of the town properties that we focused on into one parcel. And there's a lot of good reasons to do that, and we'll show you why we recommend that. We'll begin with fairly straightforward project, and that's the fueling facility. You have two current fueling facilities, one at Jablonsky Facility and one at Emergency Services. And those collectively, as you know, the licenses are renewed roughly on an annual basis, but the licenses are coming due again, and it's time to move that part of the project forward. We're proposing to build an addition on the facility for Buildings and Grounds, and then renovate and update the entire facility. The site, we're proposing new parking with site drives, and a fairly, we think, creative idea of putting photovoltaic arrays over the covered parking, which someday may lead to the charging of town vehicles. We're proposing to move and build a new animal control facility on this newly combined central facility site, and then after further study, the potential to put EMS services, either satellite or central, to this site. So, the enabling projects are, as noted, move Buildings and Grounds, and we'll come back to their site in the second part of this presentation, move Emergency Services fueling, fueling only, and connect the two facilities, and we'll show you that, ultimately move the animal shelter to the central facility, and then make plans for it, and eventually add EMS to the central facility site. So what does that look like? So here is an aerial view, a site plan, if you will. In the lighter color, there is topography, or the rise and fall of the ground underneath. The heavier dashed double dot lines are the property lines. And as you can see, the current DPW facility, and we'll zoom in on this in a minute, is on this rectangular parcel here, and is, quite frankly, using every inch of that parcel. So combining all of these parcels into one central facility allows a lot of things to occur. One, potentially create a drive. This would be a private drive, which would connect the Emergency Services here on Elm Street to the fueling facility, and here is the fueling facility. So that is on the more forward piece of the Moody Road property. And again, we're going to see views of this and the concept there. What that will do is allow for fueling of all town vehicles. A lot of the maintenance and overhaul of the vehicles already are happening on this facility, but Emergency Services has their own fueling here. And again, we're going to come back to their site in the second half of this presentation. So we're really focused on DPW and combining those facilities. So, going to keep moving here. This is the current aerial view, and for the first time, you're seeing some color added to the floor plan. And those are the proposed addition. There's a dashed line here, which runs around, over, and across. And the idea is to first infill the courtyard, interconnect the corridors, and then build a new entry here at the front. The current entry, for those that know it, some of you know it very well, the current entry is here, new entry here, and we'll talk more how that functions, and then continue the garage service bays here with some potential for some higher bay racking in that location. So we chose to take this plan further than a typical master plan for a lot of good reasons. One, to start to work out how well this might or might not function, and after all this time, we think it functions very well, and so does the committee, and so do the folks at DPW. It's flexible enough that it starts to look at public and private, and they're town facilities, I use the word private, but service by town staff versus public accessing the building, and allows things potentially, obviously, continue in operations and build an addition that would limit the amount of disturbance to the building. So again, we can come back to the details, but we wanted to show you the floor plan and show you some aspects of the floor plan. As we look at the public accessing this floor plan, there are doors configured here and here. So a large meeting room here, a vestibule with a window reception here. So even though I'm coming to the facility, quite frankly, I may not need to go inside and meet. I may be able to pick up forms, drop off information, pick up information here at the window, at either window. And we're still looking at this floor plan. Again, we're not trying to solve it here as a master plan, we're trying to put forth the elements that cause it to work. So then we have public restrooms and a series of either meeting spaces or offices. The balance then is the staff space to keep DPW and Buildings and Grounds going. We're looking at infilling the courtyard to make a more robust reporting area, service area, everything from lunchroom to, at times, as you know, the operations here go 24/7. So this would serve those needs. And again, during the day and the regular hours would function as cafeteria and break room. Can also serve as a ready room or an on-call room, too, large enough in scale. So the gross area, the existing facility is about 41,000 square feet, the proposed addition is about 15,000. That was the program needs of Buildings and Grounds, to bring this facility up to approximately 57, just under 60,000 square feet. So what could this look like? Again, we took this particular aspect of it, it's important enough both to the committee and to everyone, to look at some of the functional ways that this may work. And we've created, you'll see in this view, coming in off of Lego Way, the one way in fueling and one way out. We still have a one-way delivery drive here. The current DPW Jablonsky Facility receives material all day long, vehicles circulate here. It may be as simple as a drop-off, or a lot of the service and a lot of the activity is around on the side of the building at the service bays. We're going to look a little bit more at the building addition there, but this is the first view of what the potential, and again, we're not trying to solve this right now, we're trying to put forth the concepts so that you can see them. So with that, we're starting to drive down the drive, looking at the new public entry, the fueling facility, above-ground tanks, again, as a concept, vehicle parking, town vehicle parking here under the photovoltaic canopy. As we swing around after we fueled our vehicle, we go out the exit drive here, and this is also a view of the delivery and service lane here. So with that, I drive on out. Now, if I'm coming from the public, I would park here in this lot, and there is a new entry with a covering, perhaps, and that was the vestibule I described, where I could come in, engage at the window, go through any paperwork, or if I'm waiting, wait for a meeting or wait to come to be greeted. Again, the idea is to separate public from the functional aspects. The original, and the current, I should say, Marty, the current entry is configured here, and you can see that the concept that's presented here is to continue the same type of construction so that when it's complete, it would blend together as one facility. And there's the entry. Again, zooming up to the aerial view, looking at Moody Road here, Lego Way here, and Elm is over here in the distance, and that would eventually connect over in time. So with that, here is the current aerial view, and I do sincerely believe that this site is currently used in its entirety. There isn't really room for anything else to occur there, and this predates the truck wash, which is configured here, this aerial view. Here's the site, again, the truck wash configured here, and quite frankly, each of the sites, we do a zoning analysis, and what this shows you is that it is built out to the maximum extent possible. So by combining these into a combined central facility, you'll be good stewards of your own regulations to allow things to grow on these combined sites. Buildings we've put together in terms of square footage, and actually, you have these AutoCAD drawings now for your internal use. So what does that look like in a timeline? And after this, I'm going to pause. So year one, we're recommending that you move forward with consolidating the sites through the planning and zoning approval process. You begin the Buildings and Grounds to move in on a temporary basis. And again, we're going to come back to that facility and see what effect that would have on that property. They would move in here, by the way, and again, we will talk a little bit about the annex. Currently, the shop of Buildings and Grounds is configured over there. Year one, there is a need to locate the Emergency Services. That comes due, I believe, next year. So year one would be to move that above-ground fueling tank to this site, and then also begin the actual design. We have put forth a conceptual design, but begin the detailed design for the site and for the building. And that is a good, probably about a year process. Year two would be to finalize the design, the site, and the building, including phasing. I think, again, a lot of thought needs to be given of how to phase this to keep DPW, to keep the Jablonsky Facility in operation 24/7. And then the discussion has been to go to a publicly bid process for construction to a GC. So in year two, you finalize the design, you construct, and move the animal control facility. And again, we're going to come to that facility later. Year three would be the phased construction, three and four, and we think it is somewhere in the two-year timeline to construct this complex of a renovation and improvement. Year five would be perhaps to connect the Emergency Services with the central facility and build the roadway. And in year five, begin to look at the master planning for satellite or EMS. The concept is, and again, we'll talk a little bit more about that later, is it better to have a central EMS, or is it better to have satellite EMS? And again, we're not trying to solve that, we're saying that on this new central facility site, you now have enough space to look at doing that. It also makes sense from a fueling and vehicle maintenance standpoint. And so with that, I know I've talked quite a bit. I'm going to pause and open it up for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ireland. I will open it up to the folks on the committee first. So, Councilor Sikala, it'll go Councilor Riley, then Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Just thank you. So far, this has been a project that I know that has been in the works for a while. BL came in to do sort of a comprehensive analysis of all of our buildings, and this is what we've really been focusing on, trying to get a lot of B&amp;G and DPW under one roof as to not try to have it spread out all over town. So I think this is a great place to start. And you'll see, I think, later on in the presentation that we have some other ideas, but this is really, I think, a main focus. And you guys have seen the Buildings and Grounds building down here, and it's kind of deplorable. So I think this is a great place to start, and it would be good to be able to have the fueling station and have it connected to the police station. So, yeah, so far, so good.
Thank you, Councilor Riley.
I just want to say, I think that this part of the presentation is something to definitely focus on and keep in the front of your minds, because out of all the things that we have, this is probably the easiest jump to make, and it's the most sense, and we can, you know, provide a pretty good facility with all of this that covers all of our basic needs with DPW. So thank you for the presentation, and I can't wait to see the rest of it.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Suzak, you have any questions or comments?
I guess my comment, I mean, the facilities has been working on this for a long time. We started with Matt Koppeler when he was here, and it just seems that this is one of the things that all the town managers that I have had the pleasure to work with have wanted this DPW to be a combined site. I mean, that was the reason for the purchase of the land all around the Jablonsky. I mean, there's been a lot of insight, and also from listening to Donald and Jeff, that, you know, they take away a lot of stuff from this that they can do within their budget at budget time. And that's really, it's refreshing to hear because, you know, the main part, when we get to the real nitty-gritty part of it, it will require a referendum. But it's nice to always know that we have stuff that we can do without going to referendum. And also Cindy is on the committee, so I'll turn it over to her.
Sorry about that. Councilor Mangini, you have the floor, if you have any comments or questions. Sorry about that.
Thank you. I just wanted to briefly comment that the committee has worked incredibly, incredibly hard, and Don, under your direction. Thank you for all your hard work. Just a question I have with regards to solar panels. Is solar panels a part of, you know, phasing into any of the construction of the plan, number one? And then secondly, I know, you know, we mentioned people are able to drive often, present, you know, materials instead of having to go into the buildings, which I think is great, especially with the COVID climate that we're in. And I'm sure we probably are looking at those features, but I just wanted to get some feedback on that.
Do you want me to address that?
Yeah, you want to address that now?
Address that now?
Yeah, go right ahead.
So, the photovoltaic, the solar panels, we know we could put on a new structure. We want to pause before we say we could put them on the existing structure. But again, now would be an ideal time. So to do that, there's a little bit more work, a look at it structurally, but yes, that is the concept. I think now is the time in any construction project, but particularly here, where I think it is a good visual example of this is what the town can do to lower some of the tax burden by supplementing with photovoltaic, with the ability to generate electricity. As far as, yes, the interface with the public, I think everybody appreciates not having to go, particularly now, but even prior to that, to get town services. The smoother it is for me, and the easier it is for me, the more I appreciate that. And I think, obviously, the folks in Enfield are the same way. In other words, if I could go to a service window, if there's someone there who understands, hey, you're here to, you know, talk about the recycling program, or you're here to pick up this or that, or you're here to fill out a form. Again, that was the concept, to create it easy, visible, and the ability for the public to use the facility. Conversely, if I'm there to stay and I'm there for a meeting, it's also hopefully just as easy. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you addressing me on questions.
Councilor Kiner on the phone, any questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was still on mute. Yeah, generally speaking, I really like the idea of the central location. And as time goes on, I know it's too early to discuss this now, but obviously, we have to talk about costs, and my major question's going to be, as time goes on, how cost-effective this program is going to be, you know, for the taxpayers of Enfield. But I've got to compliment the, Mr. Ireland, I have to compliment the committee on putting this together, Joint Facilities Committee. You guys did an incredible job, and I thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Unless there's any other specific, can we hold it to the end, unless you got a specific question? I'd like to see the rest, unless you guys, so Mr. Ireland finished, but going, anyone have any questions specifically on his presentation so far? So I have some questions, but I think it may get answers as we move forward. And Suzanne, just for the record, Councilor Sparazza has joined the meeting. Mr. Ireland, you're welcome to continue, sir.
Thank you, sir. Before I go, just to address the cost, one of the things we talked to the committee about is, everybody remembers the first number they hear. So we were conscious about putting this together in a format that says, here is the master plan, now let's start to look at the cost. So I did want to be conscious of that because it is in the original mission statement. So with that, let's take a look at the other nine facilities. So we're going to start Buildings and Grounds and work our way down. I won't take the time to read them because you're going to see them, and let's keep things moving. So Buildings and Grounds on Prospect Street, ultimately, our recommendation is to close this facility, and as noted, move Buildings and Grounds to Jablonsky Facility, the central facility, and where appropriate, some of them to the Enfield Annex, and we're going to talk about that. We still need to finalize staff and personnel program for exactly the relocation, and it'll be relocated, we're recommending, right away. In other words, let's not wait until the construction is done. The time is now. Buildings and Grounds has been on, and we'll see it, has been on a site that, again, if they're utilizing every inch at the Jablonsky, they're probably using every two millimeter there on Prospect Street. So finalize the inventory of the vehicles, the equipment stored there, et cetera, and then identify how best to move the folks right now to Jablonsky and to the Enfield Annex, both vehicles, personnel, and equipment. There's quite a bit of equipment there, and some of it's even stacked up in storage. So we need to look at the Enfield Annex, I should say, Town Hall is incorrect, the Enfield Annex, and I apologize, and Jablonsky, and Buildings and Grounds to move on a temporary basis, design and construct the addition, and then finally move the folks in and close the 52 Prospect Street facility. So here it is in aerial view, and we'll look at the plan in one second. But all of this is being used in the roughly, two combined buildings, but in the roughly three buildings there on site. So here is the quick zoning analysis, and by quick, I mean, you can see that the building is taxing, you know, both setbacks, here's the rear yard setback, side yard setback, and the buildable area. And it's full. In other words, we're parking here, we've got equipment, you know, configured all the way around the site. So there really isn't an opportunity to expand this facility, and it's been well-used. Certainly, the town has gotten their money's worth, so to speak, out of this facility so far. And its location makes it challenging to bring people together under one roof. And again, there's some economy to be had there of having all of the town, it's called Buildings and Grounds, maintenance, DPW, under one roof. So again, the building's roughly 10,700, and if you recall, we're proposing roughly 15,000 square feet to be added to Jablonsky. So that would incorporate this 10,000 plus what's, I'm going to call it shoehorned in here, really packed into this site. So year one would be to do the inventory and move the folks out and the equipment over to Jablonsky and the Annex, and then turn this over to the town attorney and to sell this property. So I think, does it make sense to get on through all the next seven, eight, I'm sorry, eight properties and then open it up?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay. Okay. So the Annex, the Enfield Annex, as you know, is, one, it's a large-scale facility, and there have been other studies, we've taken those into consideration, we've looked at options, and we are proposing a new conceptual design to the site and the building to try to fully utilize the building. It, quite frankly, is underutilized right now. We want to finally review and approve, we're going to put a concept out there this evening, and we've been working with the Facilities Committee, you know, that is a change, quite frankly, and change is a challenge. So we're going to look to review and approve that concept. The building still needs to be formally programmed, and by that, we mean each and every use and how it would fit, both in there and proposed. And the town needs, okay, town needs to go through a process to define and operate office space. There have been discussions of potential rental, and we're not going to try to solve that in the master plan. However, using other towns and cities as models, even if it is rented for an operation fee or a utility fee, towns can enter into some form of quote rental agreement. And I don't think rental in the sense that a town is operating rental offices, it's in the sense of here's office space, if it makes sense legislatively, legally, and functionally, then there is going to be office space available. By the way, it's a great building, maintain the grounds, the playing fields, the entire site. We think it makes an ideal place for Town Hall to do document retention. The former locker room area downstairs, quite frankly, is well-built, it's windowless, it can be easily turned into something that would meet the state standards and your town standards for document retention. standards for document retention. Proposing to move Parks and Recs from the Lamagna Center to the Annex, some of them, and we want to talk more in detail about that, move, move some of the Buildings and Grounds, particularly the woodshop is already there, keep them there at the Annex until they can be relocated to the central facility. So what does that look like? We chose to, again, put forth a design concept here, and again, we're not trying to solve it, but we are conscious of this building having a fairly deep core to depth ratio. So what do I mean by that? When I'm standing in the middle of this building, I can't see daylight. And so the idea here is that if you know the building and will see it in aerial view, there are sections that already have very narrow high clear story window, and then it doesn't involve the rest of the building structure. So it's looking at taking that section out and introducing glazing here. So that's the concept. Again, enough space out front, we're not trying to design it at this time, we're trying to say, this could in fact become a newer entry to, to the building off a moody road. So that's the end we're looking at, and we're going to look at that in plan, but that's the concept that's put forth. So here potentially is what an office space could look like in there when you remove that section of windows. So this is to scale, this is a concept that could become a reality if, if you so choose. We would then look to borrow daylight from the interior, and here's where the, probably the most radical part of this concept comes. We're proposing to create a clear story where the library space currently is, that's skylit from above, that allows daylight in. And so as you can see, and I'm going to toggle back to that office, but this is what I meant by the core. Right now, there is no daylight here. And so if I'm, oops, I went the wrong way, I apologize, if I'm in the office looking out with these clear story windows, I can start to see daylight in these offices. And so that concept is accomplished by opening the middle of this building up and shortening the depths to the core and creating an inner courtyard here, or walkway, sorry, to this courtyard. So we put that concept forth. Here's the sections I was talking about, and I know it's hard to see and you can certainly look at it on your own, but the, the horizontal windows here, there's three of them in each of these bays, those would be removed, and we think, again, conceptually, it's, it would be easy to do. This section here where the skylights are is the section we had proposed to remove. Keep the mechanical penthouse and open this up here. So that's the concept. Site's a beautiful site, it's, it's very well organized, great for sports, as you know, it functions very well as a high school. By the way, it, it can't really return for school use without a substantial investment so in bringing it up to current school standards. It can certainly function as athletics, it can certainly function as limited use, but to return it to a school, you know, those days are gone. But continue to use the athletic fields, continue to use the building, again, well planned, well laid out, room for expansion here and new entry possibly here, and we'll see that in the, in the floor plans. So the building gross area is 210,000 square feet on three levels. And the current uses of the 210 are laid out here, and we won't try to go through them all this evening, but you have a section of adult education. We nicknamed a board of ed, it really should say that it is public schools and their use by the rec department. CNA, Buzz Robotics, B&amp;G Electrical, there is a large area in green, not really in use, some file storage and admin, building support. So in our diagrams, we're starting to gray out areas that are building support, stairs, elevators, et cetera, and then we're starting to call out circulation as a separate number so you're really looking at the usable space. So we took that into consideration, and here is what is proposed. And there's an intentional dashed line across here, and this is the office space section of the building. There's enough space to keep everything that's there now, add the Town Hall record storage to this lower level here in the former varsity locker rooms, still keep all functions and create this office space in this section of the building on three floors. So that's what's proposed. This was not taken lightly by the Facilities Committee. You know, there is a, a lot of debate, and I'm sure there'll continue to be a lot of debate about how best to use this building, but we believe that there will always be a need for some form of office space, whether it's used by the town or used by the quasi-town functions, and that the idea of returning it to a strict educational program is not a good idea. So the recommendation there is for the, the office space. Year one, we recommend that the Town Hall document retention be firmed up and planned and designed. You would start then year one looking at any kind of formal agreement or the use and policy of these offices. Again, we're not going to try to solve that in this master plan. Move Parks and Recs to free up some space at Lamagna, and then move some of Buildings and Grounds to the, the Enfield Annex. Year two, construct that document retention. By the way, it is intentionally on the ground floor, it is near a loading area, it would facilitate the movement out of, we're going to see it in a minute, out of the Town Hall attic, but to a ground floor location, which will make it much easier on document retention handling. And then perhaps in year three and four, construct and re-stack the building. So that's the Enfield Annex. Next, we move to the Thomas Alcorn Building, and this also former school is a great, great building on a great site. We think it can be used more efficiently, more efficiently, and want to encourage the use of a more detailed program for town and Enfield Public Schools. And I think the functions that are narrowed out can coexist and work well together. The, as I said, the, the staff to square foot area, that suggests that that utilization is fairly low, and we'll look at that, and that the cafeteria right now is probably one of the easiest areas to configure into office space. So first enabling project is to identify what other functions, town functions could work well with the Enfield Public Schools. Perhaps move some of the social service offices here, and I want to be clear, it is the offices, and it's the offices that may serve the Enfield Public School function that is there now. Again, there could be some good synergy there. And then plan that site and that building for long-term use, because I said, it's a great building, and we're going to see it in a minute. So here is the aerial view, it's configured on roughly three floors, a lot of good open space. There is currently a look at how best to utilize the basketball courts, how much parking is needed, and quite frankly, we'll see in the next, you know, there is space here available. And not trying to solve it, trying to point out that there's a lot of good open space, this building is a good neighbor to the residential. It does allow for expansion, it can grow on this site, has good access and good potential for expansion as you plan out over time. So the building configures here, it's roughly 53,000 square feet. It is broken down like this, about half of the space is on the first floor, the 25,000 square feet. Enfield TV is here, about 1,000 square feet, and then public schools and public administration, you'll see in these next three slides, is in, in the salmon or red color, and then the blue is the administration, and then on the upper floor is PD. We do separate out building support, stairs and mechanical spaces and circulation. So these are the numbers for usable space in the total building of 52,000. On the second floor, the floor plan gets a little more constrained, 17,000 open space here, and on the third floor is entirely PD and IT for the town. So what, what do I mean by utilization? One of the ways to look at it is to take the usable, and again, it's a gross usable, so it's a large number, and divide it by the number of people that are using it. And it's, it's a little bit on the generous side, you know, 1,000 square feet, roughly 1,000 square feet is the average. A lot of that is understandable, and let me explain for a couple of reasons. One, of course, IT and the police department and the technical aspect of IT does not lend itself well to being compact. It is the reuse of a school, so on the left, you'll see a concept, you can take classrooms and configure them into three offices, you could take cafeteria and configure it into open office space and thereby increase the population. Again, we're not trying to solve it, again, our charge was to try to find effective ways of utilizing the buildings, we think this is a great building and can be enhanced, the utilization can only get better from here. So year one is to look at social services, what could move there and what could co-locate well. And then in years two through five is to identify the additional programs and the growth of this facility, because again, great location, great building, great site. So next, we move to social services. Our recommendation is to ultimately close this facility and, and sell it. To do that, there are a number of things that need to be looked at. What of these functions could go to Thomas Alcorn? What can move to the Lamagna Center? And yes, we are aware of other projects there at the center of town. We haven't been directly involved with them, but we are quite aware of them, and there may be an opportunity to move some of the social services there and keep them. The committee was very strong about the idea of keeping social services in the center of town, even though this site is looked to be sold. So we're not selling social services, I want to be clear on that. We're selling, selling the site and retaining social services and looking at the best way to locate them within the town. So here is the aerial view of the building, again, good building in great shape. It is somewhat on its own, if you will. In other words, it's there at the center of town, but as you can see, it's next to the church in a residential neighborhood setback. We think it's a fairly saleable property. It's 6,000 square feet and was built and functions, functions well. Again, the charge was to look at optimizing the use of all of the town property, and this one could, could be sold and not miss a beat in utilization. So that, that's the, yes, yes.
Mr. Ireland, sorry to cut you off. I'd like to give you a 10-minute warning, I want to make sure I have at least 10 minutes for folks to, we have the last questions who didn't get a chance, and we have a hard stop at seven, so I just want to, I'm not trying to move you along, but just want to give you, so I want to make sure people have a chance to ask a question. All right, thank you.
And I'll move, I'll move. I try not to talk fast, so I will, and I'll try to, I'll try to summarize, thank you, thank you. So Town Hall, I think the biggest focus here is on that third floor attic. It's not a great, it's not a good spot to store your records. It's not big enough, it's not conditioned, it's not in protected construction, and you've used it, it's full. So if space becomes available, that could become swing space, that can start to look at, again, other projects going on in town, that could stage them so that they could go over to the Enfield Annex, that's the basic plan in a nutshell there in the master plan for the Town Hall. Again, great building, we all know it, works well, no real change needed there. Yes, we're aware of other potential connections and, and projects there, no need really to change anything here. So it's really about document retention and migrating that to the Enfield Annex. Next, animal control. I think the biggest reason to move this is finding it, quite frankly, you know, it's not that accessible for the public. That and it's in a, a small scale building, and it's, it's another opportunity to close a functioning facility that you're paying to operate. Again, bring that function up to the central facility. So here it is, down there on Parsons next to the river, and there is the site. It could combine with wastewater treatment, it is a site that is zoned residential, believe it or not, down in that zone. I think it exists by special, special exception. But again, we're, we're looking to, to, to close this property. And the timeline would be to begin to look at that right away, plan that and construct it on the newly consolidated by year two, we believe you'll have the, the central facility properties consolidated. So public service, again, functions well, great location, there is a mandate through an agreement they've entered into for an operational vehicle that should be covered. So we think that the most effective way to do that is to put an unconditioned, so it's a pre-engineered metal building covering over this. You could certainly put a temporary covering, but again, I think it's clear that emergency and police operations are always going to have command vehicles, vehicles that need to be covered, vehicles that should remain there next to their facility, and putting a modest, again, a very modest unconditioned, and I say unconditioned, it's not heated or cooled, it is a covering to preserve the long-term use of that vehicle. We talked about interconnection, and then we talked about the underground fuel tanks moving above ground and moving up to the central facility. So those are the projects necessary to, to move that along. The drive, by the way, is aligned here, and our civil engineers have looked at that, both the alignment of that drive and then the topography and crossing the, the wetlands. So that's what the facility looks like, again, kind of working our way across here, across the wetlands here and interconnecting. Building works well, doesn't need, I mean, it can, the object here was not to study police functions in this building, it was to study the overall site and the combinations of the site. So like any public safety complex, there is always a need to look at it long-term as far as functional use. And again, we didn't dive into that under this master plan. 25,000 square foot facility. Planning, the timeline is to plan next year to move those tanks from a below ground to above ground, plan that re-engineered, pre-engineered building, and then construct it, and then perhaps in year five, connect the two, this site with Jablonsky site. Emergency medical services, and we, we looked quite closely at this, and it's not a site we recommend expanding on. You'll see it, it's, it's very constrained, it also has a history and there've been traffic studies, and therefore additional traffic is not recommended at this site. Could it be a good satellite site? Yes. Could it be the central site? Possibly, with the same vehicle count. So, but now you have options, now you have the option of moving this or central and/or this becomes satellite or satellite at the central facility. So here is emergency medical services, again, it uses every inch of this site, it is unfortunately not directly aligned with this intersection, I think that's one of the concerns with traffic, this intersection as well. So it is combined, by the way, on one greater site, so it's not an easy equation to look at, it's kind of over the setbacks, and again, we don't recommend expanding there. However, it can remain and function well. It, it's a beautiful, you know, streetscape, and the building functions well as it stands today, about 4,000 square feet. You probably need, probably need more in the long term. And so that, that's what this is about, is beginning in the near future to do a detailed study of emergency medical services townwide. Last, and I don't mean least, is Central Library, but here again, you've got a great facility, it functions well, and we really think, continue that. Take a look at identifying what the library needs, what the community needs, and what the town needs at the Central Library. Again, in these current times, it's great to have a building that's functioned and, you know, can be an alternate location for use. There is some ability for a little bit of expansion out here in the front yard on Middle Road, but again, it's well-used, great building, well-maintained, does have a little bit of space, sorry, wrong way, in the lower level. Egress is always a challenge from the lower level, egress, and by that I mean access and accessibility, stairs, so on and so forth. But again, you've got a great building here that has a total of just under 40,000 square feet, so we recommend that that remains. And with that, I think I have allowed enough time for questions, so I will start.
Well done, thank you, I appreciate it, well done. Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate it, Mr. Ireland. Any questions from anyone who didn't answer prior? And here to Council, Councilor Mueller.
I had a quick question about social services, moving it from the center of town, would that be moving it away from the people that need it the most down this area?
Councilor Mueller, I think the recommendation is to keep things in the center of town, and only migrate, yeah, keep, keep center of town, again, between projects that are going on the Lamagna Center. Keep center of town, again, between projects that are going on in the LeMoyne Center. And if there is a synergy, in other words, if there are social services for the current public schools program at the Alcorn Center that would work well together, then those offices could move to that facility. So that was the recommendation of Counselor Mueller.
Oh, great. Thank you. Right. Anyone else in the council chambers before I open up to the committee members? I'll save my questions for last. No questions? I'll start. Counselor Sacala.
Nothing. I'm just... This is, again, a very large-scale project broken down into a lot of different pieces. And I can tell you that really where the building committee has been focusing is the Jablonsky Center and Buildings and Grounds. And to be very truthful, there has been a lot of lively discussion and some disagreement on some of these buildings on what to do. But again, like Charlotte said, this is really something we want to bring to you guys and focus at least right now on getting DPW all together under one roof.
Thank you. Counselor Riley, any other comments or questions?
The only other comment that I have, and we talked about it at length at the last facilities meeting, was that, you know, we've been talking about this for quite some time now and obviously we can't move and fix all of the problems in, you know, the next year, but we would like to make sure that somehow and some way we keep moving on this because we don't want to see it just, you know, oh, great presentation and then nothing happens. We want to see, you know, us keep talking about it and how we can make it work for the town. But that's the only other thing I have to add.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Suzak, any comments or questions?
I'd just like to thank John, great presentation. I mean, this has been a lot of work by the committee and I think that he's all moved forward by the committee meeting, their two meetings a month religiously, and looking at our DPW staff, looking at what's in there and putting in their budgets what they can do and start us moving in a direction that we need to.
Thank you. Counselor Mangini, any comments or questions?
Just wanted to say thank you. It was a very well-thought-out, well-put-together presentation.
Thank you. Counselor Kiner, any... Want to make sure any questions or comments?
No, I don't have any questions, Mr. Mayor. Just thank you to the joint facilities committee and to Mr. Ireland. It's a wonderful presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ireland, I actually have a couple of questions. So the archive, I know it's inconceptual. With it being, I know the locker room very well down at the Annex, will the ability to actually have one of those, you know, the kind of the modern-type archives where you again, sort of do it by, you know, electronics instead of folks, you know, where the public could go in and actually, you know, look for, if they were looking for archives, that sort of thing?
The potential is there, yes. The floor is loaded, so in other words, you could do dense storage as well. As far as I... We haven't really looked at a public window access, but certainly can be planned that way.
Yeah, I was just curious. I mean, I think it's a great idea and it's actually a perfect location too, by the way.
Thank you.
So I think, I agree with the other counselors that it makes sense now to start the movement over to the Jablonsky where we have a central town operation really is what it would with the senior center with the, which I know wasn't part of the presentation, but the police department and possibly moving EMS over there. Yeah, I think what has to happen as well is getting the animal shelter out of where it is. You know, it's just a terrible location down there. It's really... I get why I was there, but it'd be great to be able to move it up to the Jablonsky Center where, again, it's just much more central located and, you know, again, just we'll be able to maintain it, I think, a little easier than keeping it where it is. You know, I think that's something that we have to do. And I really do appreciate the fact of the connection with the fuel tanks. My only question with that now, so as we're going, as we're living through natural disasters, everything that's going on, will that be our only outdoor fuel tank in town if that's where we move it to? Do we... I don't know if you can answer that or if someone else can answer that?
I think someone, I'll lean on Donald or Jeffrey.
Because my only...
But I think it was central.
Yeah, my only concern, obviously, we kind of need to have more than one and maybe that's been looked into for the simple fact that what happens if a storm goes through the center of town?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the... We also have WPC that has a smaller tank, but we do have that ability to go down there, all of the department, go down there. And we're also looking at just having some, like, fuel cards or something like that that we could use locally.
Okay, perfect.
In that instance.
Appreciate it. And my last question, Mr. Ireland, so I agree with you that I think the key point of your presentation, which may have not been emphasized because I know you have a ton to show, is the 24-hour operation at the Jablonsky Center. How important that is to not only safety, but really is, the town is a 24-hour operation seven days a week. And do we, when you looked at this, do we, A, currently have the IT, you know, I'm sorry if I'm using wrong terminology, the connectivity where it can be 24 hours a day, seven days a week? Would that be part of any kind of upgrade as you see as we move forward?
I think your town staff does an excellent job of making it work. I think that's the honest, most honest answer I can give you. They do a great job of making it 24. It can only get better, both from a functional standpoint, but also from, as you said, the IT, but the, everything from fiber to antennas to connectivity. Again, that's why I think this needs to be carefully planned over at least a year timeframe and then carefully constructed and sequenced so that it doesn't interrupt the 24/7 and comes online by phase. So there's a lot of planning to do and yes, that is, that is, I think, the core, the spirit of the operation. It's a 24/7. Folks are there all the time. It can function all the time. So, so yes. Yep.
So I'm good. Any other questions from anyone? Mr. Ireland, if you have any closing comments, I want to make sure you... I appreciate the fact that you still got a few minutes. I don't know if you have anything else you'd like to say?
I want to thank everybody. I want to thank you again for having me. I think we're enthusiastic about moving it forward. The next steps are to now refine the budget and continue the outreach to the public. So, so again, thank you and it's great to be here.
So just so you know, obviously barring what's happening with the pandemic, our goal is, we usually, like, last year we started the budget, we're hoping to do the same thing in early winter. So this will be happening fairly quickly, just so you know. So meaning conversations of what or whatnot will be in the capital budget next year. So can I give you a little idea of our timing?
Sounds great.
Sir, first of all, appreciate you being here. Great presentation and again, kudos to the committee members, to everyone who serves on this committee, a fantastic presentation. And my last question, will this be on our website for people to able access?
You have a copy of it via already, exactly what you saw this evening. So I think it's ready to go.
So Chris, I don't know if Chris is on. Chris, under the Town Manager page where we normally put these presentations, will that be there?
Yes.
Great. Perfect. Mr. Ireland, again, thank you very much. It was a great presentation. We appreciate your time. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all very much. Take care.
Have a good night. Do I have a motion to adjourn a special meeting by Counselor Mueller?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Riley. Those in the fair, would I say aye?
Aye.
Meeting is canceled? I mean, excuse me, meeting is over? You have one minute before the regular meeting? So if anyone has to do something, you have a minute. Sorry about that. Be back in one minute. It is 7 o'clock. I call the regular meeting of the Enfield Town Council, Monday, October 19, 2020, to order prayer. Deputy Mayor Suzak, please.
Tonight, I want everybody to understand the power of community. Tonight, we meet, some in person, some remote, with a focus that's one, the well-being of the citizens of the town of Enfield and the town of Enfield itself. Shakespeare said, "We know what we are, but not know what we may be." So as we tackle the problems of today, may we never lose sight of the tomorrow and what we can be. Everybody take moment of silence for the courage and guidance that we need to do the job that's set before us. Thank you. And pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance.
We have no flag here, but in the chambers you do.
Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne, roll call, please.
Counselor Suzak.
Counselor Ungeyer.
Here.
Counselor Bosco.
Counselor Sacala.
Here.
Counselor Hemler.
Here.
Counselor Kiner.
Here.
Mayor Ludwig.
Here.
Counselor Mangini.
Is here.
Here.
Counselor Mueller.
Here.
Counselor Riley.
Here.
Counselors Frazo.
Here.
There are 10 members present, what is asked of them?
Thank you, Suzanne. And moving on to item four of our agenda, the fire evacuation announcement in case of a fire. We do have the exit right in the back of the council chambers. Please go left to right orderly in an orderly manner, out the door and out to the parking lot or to our left to the audience's right. We have doors, exit doors right here. It'll be a door right to your left when you go out into the hallway. Go down the stairs and proceed, please, slowly out into the parking lot and safe in case of a fire. We move on to item five, minutes of the preceding meetings. Special meeting, October 5, 2020. Regular meeting, October 5, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve by Counselor Mueller? Seconded by Counselor Ungeyer. Any deletions, additions, corrections of any of the minutes? Hearing none by a show of hands, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Suzanne, that's 10 in favor and zero against. Okay, moving right on to the special guest, item six. Do we have anyone here from the cultural and arts committee? Or is that going to be online? Ma'am? Come on up? No, not... Now you... Cultural arts.
Where do I go?
Right up here.
I'm the poet laureate.
Oh, come on up. Do we have the poet laureate? I'm sorry. Welcome.
Thank you.
And the button should be right. If it's not lit, just click on that button. Is it a... And you'll be able to speak? Is it?
I think it's lit. Can you?
Click. Yeah, you are. There you go. And sorry, welcome.
Thank you.
Again, the Enfield Cultural Arts poet laureate. Welcome your name and then tell us a little bit about yourself. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Elizabeth Suzik and I was chosen by the Enfield Cultural Arts Committee to be the first poet laureate in Enfield. And I thank the Town Council for having me here. As poet laureate, one of the ideas of poet laureate is to spread appreciation and understanding of poetry in the town. And I will do that with older adults and also with children. I'm a poet who writes for children and for adults. And I'll read you two poems if I'm allowed to tonight.
I was actually going to ask you that question. Great idea. Thank you.
Okay.
And take your time. Again, you have the floor.
And thank you for commissioning me tonight. This is from my book on burying moths in calendars. I've written eight books. This, I think, is number six and the name of it is "In Time." Imagine this is the time hungry children fill their bloated bellies with sweet potatoes, blueberries, thick warm bread. Do not know the word soup kitchen. Dream without worry for tomorrow's food. Imagine this is the time abused women find strength, are confident, laugh, leave the men who mutilate, learn life is boundless and rejoice because they own their name. Imagine this is the time men and men, women and women, love for love's sake, free from government and religious oppression, choose to marry, honor in sickness and health, create families. Imagine this is the time race is blind, streets dance with color as doors remain unlocked, windows unbarred, prisons become pastures of parks with treehouses and swings. Imagine if all Americans break bread, then toast their children and the children of their children, then this is the time. And every person sifting through the erosion of spirit will find water to quench their thirst and drink. So that's a little bit of a political poem. This is one of my children's poems, which will be in a children's book coming out in 2021, which my goal is to have two copies in every school and one copy for every daycare in Enfield. And the name of it is "Poppy Piccolopolis." Poppy Piccolopolis made really quite a scene, for Poppy loved every food that was a shade of green, spinach, broccoli, Brussels sprouts, just to name a few. Green beans, kale and celery were what she loved to chew. But pickles were her favorite, sour, sweet or butter. Poppy ate pickles that made her tongue a flutter. "Pickles, pickles, pickles, please," she'd order at deli bars, then tell the waitress, "Hold the bread, just bring the pickle jars." Her mother sternly said one day, "You can't eat pickles only. Here have a slice of ham and cheese, a hot dog or baloney." So one day Poppy said, "Okay, I'll eat a slice of cheese, but put the pickles on both sides." Then suddenly she sneezed. "Achoo!" She sneezed with all her might. Her head fell to the floor. And before she knew it, Poppy's pickles weren't tasty anymore. Well, now instead of pickles, Brussels sprouts or beans, Poppy eats only bread with nothing in between.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything, I mean, anything else you would like to add? I mean, like to add, you have the floor, so feel, I appreciate you reading both those poems, but anything else, I want to make sure you have a little time, so...
Thank you. Well, I'm just very excited to get going on this. I hope to do some distance learning with the children in school. I hope, you know, when my book comes out, to coordinate it with the library and some readings. And I hope to be available for the Town Council, for the Board of Ed, for the veterans' parades, for the Memorial Day Parade to read some poems. And I'm very pleased to have this position. Poet laureates have been in the United States since 1616 and so it's a long road of poet laureates, although it's the first time that Enfield has had one. And I was surprised that Enfield hasn't had one because we have a community college, which I used to teach at, right here for us. So we can really gather a lot of students and I think a lot of people coming in from the community colleges to get a little bit more knowledge of Enfield through poetry and through different functions that I plan to have. Thank you.
If okay, folks may have some questions for you if you don't mind? Does anyone have any questions? We'll go to... Sorry, one second. We're going to go before we go to the phones. Excuse the virtual, Counselor Mangini, excuse me. Counselor... Councilor Sacala, then Councilor Riley, then I'll go to the folks out in virtual.
I don't have a question, but thank you for coming. And I can tell you that I now know where your daughter gets her writing skills from.
Oh.
Very different genre, but you are both very talented.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Riley.
Yeah, I just want to say, I knew Elizabeth through First Readers, but I didn't know that you are obviously a wonderful poet. So maybe someday you'll have to come and be.
Please be on mute on the TV. Sorry, excuse me.
Maybe someday you'll have to come and be our special guest of honor one night for First Readers.
I would be delighted. Thank you.
So, Councilor Kiner, you got a question?
No, I wanted to make a comment.
Go right ahead.
You know, congratulations, Liz, on becoming the town's first poet laureate.
Thank you, Bill.
This is not related to our deputy mayor. Just again, for the record. Liz, I've known you for a very long time. And I just know that you will use your talents to spread the joys and appreciation of poetry to our townspeople and to our children, and that you will bring credit to our town as our first poet laureate. And thank you to, as a liaison, by the way, along with Councilwoman Hemler, to the commission. I want to thank, we want to thank Emily, who's the chairperson of the commission, and the members of the Cultural Arts Commission for putting this program in motion. So again, Liz, congratulations to you. And I look forward to hearing a lot from you and a lot about you, and certainly a lot of your poetry. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Anyone else virtually? Any questions?
Yes, yes, if I may. I'd like to just congratulate you on this appointment. I think the last poet laureate that I was familiar with was Maya Angelou. I know I encage bird's sayings. But to bring culture to our town, especially to our children, is a phenomenal, you know, experience. And you should be applauded in that respect alone. And I look forward to hearing more from you, Elizabeth. And thank you, and congratulations again.
Thank you very much, Cynthia.
Deputy Mayor Suzak, any comments or questions?
No, just thank you for coming and appreciate the poetry that you read for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Councilor Ungary.
Hi, thank you for sharing your poems with us. I enjoyed hearing them. And I'm always excited to hear about additional culture coming to town. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurie.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Councilor Mueller.
Hi, thank you. I knew you looked familiar from this nuntun. You must work with John Chire and the Dwayne de Trenton as well. So that'll be a good collaboration as well. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Again, I wish you the best of luck. This is really great news. And you're the first, so that means you have to blaze a trail. So we're looking forward to seeing what you do.
I'll do the best I can.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Moving on, other special guest, Pamela Townsend. If you can, unless you want Lucian to come up for you. Lucian, you got to give her a shove. You want to move that chair?
I'm a little, I'm not very graceful.
No worries.
I just learned, actually, this is, I haven't gone to the doctors yet. But it is broken.
Yeah, you're welcome. Welcome for showing, again, sorry about your injury. Are you going to tell us about your injury too? Or just your? No, go right ahead. Sorry, welcome. Name and title, and you get the floor.
It is broke. I did get x-rays done on it. But I haven't gone to the orthopedic yet. See how much damage. Good evening. I'm Pam Townsend, I'm an Enfield resident, and I'm honored to be the location coordinator for Enfield's Reeds Across America.
Pam, the mic, sorry. Sorry about that. You're good?
Do I start over?
No, go right ahead.
I'm also a dual member of the John Macholik American Legion Post 154 in Thompsonville. I serve as the auxiliary president, and I am also a post member. So I am here tonight to announce Reeds Across America in Enfield. Each year, millions of Americans come together to remember the fallen, honor those that served and their families, and teach the next generation about the value of freedom. We have faced many challenges this year due to the pandemic. We have, many of the locations are not able to have a traditional ceremony and wreath placement. At this time, the John Macholik American Legion Auxiliary, Unit 154, is still planning to host the Reeds Across America for Enfield. The ceremony is on Saturday, December 19. It will take place at St. Pat's Cemetery, located on King Street, and it begins promptly at 12 o'clock. This is a free outdoor event, and the public is invited to attend. This year's theme is "Be an American Worth Fighting For." The inspiration came from a keynote address made by Staff Sergeant Daniel Strong during the 2018 Escort to Arlington Welcome Stop at Monty Tech, located in Fitchburg, Massachusetts, not too far from here. As an infantryman in the United States Marine Corps, he lost 18 Marines during his service. Three were his friends when he was a Lance Corporal, six as their squad leader, and the remaining nine as his platoon sergeant. Each impacted Staff Sergeant Strong in a unique way as he witnessed firsthand what true sacrifice was and experienced the ripple effect it has on all involved. To remember those sacrifices, we honor them by hosting a ceremony and placing wreaths at their final resting place. I'm often asked, why don't we place a wreath on every veteran's grave? My answer is, we hope to do that one day at every cemetery in Enfield. But we need your sponsorship. Each wreath costs $15, and there are several ways to sponsor a wreath. The easiest is to go to the website. There is a PowerPoint slide on ETV. And I'm going to give you the website. It's a little on the long side. Basically, the reason why that is so long is it will link you into all the groups that support St. Pat's Cemetery. If you don't go to that site, the wreaths will go to Arlington. If that's your choosing, that's fine. So I also, I have some sponsorship forms to provide to each one of the town councilors, and I post it on social media. You can also email me at enfieldwaa@yahoo.com. And like I said, ETV has a slide up. We ask the public, when they arrive, to keep in mind that St. Pat's Cemetery does not have a parking lot. Attendees are asked to arrive early and respectfully park within the cemetery. We have had issues where people have unfortunately driven over areas they didn't belong in. Some of the roads will be blocked for the ceremony. Ceremony participants, volunteers, attendees will follow all Connecticut and CDC guidelines established due to the pandemic, and proper wear of a face mask is required. There are a few changes from previous years, basically due to the pandemic. We will not be providing chairs, but you are very welcome to bring your own space accordingly. The wreaths, some people like to reserve a wreath so that they can put it on their loved one's grave. We used to do that, a pickup after the ceremony. We're going to do it, we're going to try it this year and do it prior to the ceremony. And that's going to be between 10:00 and 11:00 a.m. We only ask that you make sure you give yourself enough time to place the wreath, and then you can come back to the ceremony. If you have any questions, you can email me directly at the email that I gave you, or you can call my cell phone number at 860-463-2795. And I have a separate announcement. It's not really an announcement. It's just to let you know something that's going on, or hopefully going on. We are hoping that the convoy is going to come to town. And Lori Gates is the convoy contact. She does the convoy. I work the ceremony and the wreath placements. And once she finds out, once a final decision is made, she will make an announcement accordingly. So I hope to see everyone on December 19. And thank you for giving me this time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Pam. Any questions for Pam? Councilor Riley.
Pam, I just had one question for you. If we have a Girl Scout troop, or a Cub Scout pack, or a Boy Scout troop that would like to come and help lay the wreaths down, do we need to make arrangements with you beforehand? Or do we just show up, kind of, with the uniforms on?
It's better to arrange it beforehand because then I can kind of guide you to a certain area to work within. Just makes it easier to coordinate. We end up with several people that are, we end up with several people, and sometimes it gets a little crazy. Depends on how many wreaths we receive.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And then, Councilor Hamler.
Not a question, just a comment. Thank you, Pam. Thank you for everything you do.
You're very welcome. Thank you, Kelly.
Sorry, go ahead.
I have the sponsorship forms. Normally, I would give them to the town clerk. So I'm not sure how I could give these forms to everyone with the best way.
We'll pick them up and leave them. We'll pick them up and away. Yep, appreciate it. Or maybe even put them right, just leave them there. We'll pick them up. You go, Kelly, yeah, with her. Sorry, with your bum leg.
That's okay. That's okay. I just, yeah, when I walked in, I was like.
You're right.
Okay, how do I do this?
Any questions from anyone out in the virtual world?
Yes, I have a question.
Councilor Mangini.
Pam, it's not a question. I just want to thank you for your hard work. I know how much it goes to pulling this, you know, wonderful ceremony together. It's honorable, and you should be very much commended for your hard work. And thank you again.
Thank you, Cindy.
Anyone else? Deputy Mayor Suzak or Councilor Kiner?
Just thank you, Pam.
Thank you, Donna.
Any closing comments, Pam?
On the back of the form that Kelly just picked up are a list of, is a list of the different groups. A lot of the PTOs jumped on board to do fundraising. We got some Girl Scout group, a couple of girls, the First Readers Association. So the Auxiliary, Enfield Hua. So there's quite a few. It's an opportunity to fundraise for our local organizations. That's why I try and direct people to go to the big website. So it helps, keeps everything here in town.
First of all, thank you for toughening it out and coming here tonight.
That's okay. Thank you.
Reminder, last year, the, our boys hockey team, high school hockey team, helped you folks last year. And of course, the invitation's out there, if they're listening.
Absolutely.
Any of the sports teams or high school that are trying to make a go of it during this time, I'm sure you could use the help.
Oh, absolutely. They were wonderful last year.
They did a great job. They took a lot of pride in it.
Yeah, they did a great job. So, but that's about it.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Go right ahead.
I'm hoping to have a couple of surprises at the ceremony.
Well, if you can get the convoy, that's a pretty big surprise.
That'll be awesome, if we can get the convoy. They come a little bit earlier, though. But that's okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to item seven, public communications and petitions. You have five minutes to speak, first time around. It is 7:25. Would anyone like to speak for the council at this time?
Gina Sullivan, 11 Spear Avenue. Speaking of Spear Avenue, many of you may or may not know that over this summer, my street, along with a plethora of others on Enfield Street, had some construction with the Water Company. It was a long, loud, sort of vibratious, is that a word? I don't know, summer, to say the least. But we got through it. Unfortunately, just this past, over the past few weeks, we were noticing some plumbing issues in our house. So of course, we found it curious after all the activity that had taken place. But we still had to follow the right protocol and call our plumber to come in. So our plumber spent not one, but two full days in our home trying to figure this out. So at the end of the second day, and about $3,000 later, he has an idea based on his snake that he put in our pipes that it went out to the street. But we had to have the water pollution guys come in and check, to be sure. So at that point, we were also told, my husband and I, that this could cost us around $14,000 if it was in our yard. So trying to deal with the shock and, you know, the, I don't know what other word to use. We were just kind of stunned. I reached out to my state rep because I had no idea what to do. It was 8:00 at night, and I had no idea where to turn. So Tom was able to put us in touch with Water Pollution Control through a dispatch, through the police department. Two gentlemen came out. And I'm going to say their first names. I probably can't say their last names from Water Pollution Control. Mike D. and Eric L. These guys were at our house within 40 minutes Tuesday evening. And then they were back at our house quarter of seven the next morning. Not only did they bring in a plumber and find out that, thank the Lord, it was in the street where they had done the work. They stayed in my area, on my street, until the construction jolling came, till the whole thing was done that day later on. We didn't have plumbing for four days. Me and three guys in a house, and not a lot of flushing going on. I'm going to tell you, it was not fun. But I am here to thank the Water Pollution Control guys for the amazing job that they did quickly for us. And, great guys. We had a blast, really. I mean, they were just very personable and very nice, and made a really stinky situation a happy ending. And with that being said, I have to put a call out to Tom Arnoni, who, as far as I'm concerned, saved us probably a day or two because I would have waited till the next day and called Town Hall and say, "What do I do?" And he got me going in the right direction. So just here to say thank you. Thank you to the town, and thank you to Water Pollution Control. Have a good night.
Thank you. Lucian, you're next.
I don't know. Can you hear me okay with the mask on? Okay. Lucian LaFave, I'm the vice chairman of the Town Veterans Council and also commander of American Legion Post 154. I'm here to talk about, unfortunately, not having a Veterans Day Parade. And, but I want to let the people of Enfield know that all the cemeteries in town will still be flagged for Veterans Day. The flags will be placed out the week prior to the morning of what would have been the parade, November 8. Post 80 and Post 154, we go out to the cemeteries, perform a short ceremony in each cemetery. So the veterans will not be forgotten on Veterans Day, even without having the parade. So I just wanted to let the people of Enfield know that we are still honoring our veterans. So, and hopefully, Memorial Day, we can get back to having a parade in town.
Well, let's plan for it.
Yes. So, again, my main concern is just to let the people know that the flags will be put in the cemeteries, the wreaths will be put at all the monuments, along with the flags. And the only thing that we're missing is a parade. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak for the council at this time? Anyone else? Hearing none, I declare public communications closed. We move on to item eight, council communications. We move on to item eight, counselor communications. I'll start, I think we were in a chambers last time first. I'll start. Anyone out on the virtual world, would you like to have any counselor comments? We'll start ladies first. Counselor Mangini?
Do you want to make a moment? Remind everyone that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And just so people are aware, men also do get breast cancer in addition to women. I lost a very close polo colleague a few years back, young man in his like early 40s, I believe, breast cancer. So it's, it's a disease that we need to continue to be aware of and to continue to fight. So I just want to bring awareness to everyone and be supportive of the cause. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Suzak?
All right. I actually would like to read a letter. It's from Melissa Everett, who is our former Chair of Clean Energy. And she says, "Thank you for welcoming the Connecticut Green Bank to present before council on October 5th. She had planned to attend but was unable. The Joint Committee, Facilities Committee previewed the presentation and encouraged staff to schedule it. You probably know that the Connecticut Green Bank was formed by the state to bring the private sector resources into play and to upscale renewable energy. The Green Bank was involved with incentive programs that our Clean Energy Committee utilized to bring approximately $21,000 to the town in recognition of our work, including the Solarize Campaign, which was for the individual homeowner. Improved solar zoning regulations. Melissa worked with the town staff to increase the solar, the ability to put solar on your home and get, make the regulations so that they made sense. Adoption of CPAC's financing, which is solar for businesses. And to outreach and diversity of education and activities that the Clean Energy Committee worked to do, to, to receive the $15,000 Bright Ideas Grant from Eversource that funded the creation of the 2014 Enfield Energy Strategy and the Foundation for the Energy Performance Contract. We received another $15,000 that was used for education." So I think that, you know, Melissa wanted to reach out to the council and give a little credence to the fact that we are quite familiar with the Connecticut Green Bank and some of the things that they've done. So thank you for allowing me to read Melissa's letter.
Thank you. Counselor Kiner, you have any comments?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. You know, we have some pretty incredible people in this town and I'd like to recognize some of them tonight. The Lions Club of Enfield, under Bill Vada, who's the President of the Lions Club, and you might remember, a former mayor of this town, has been involved with a number of activities during the pandemic. In April, the Lions Club of Enfield donated $200 worth of protective personal equipment to the Enfield Police Department and another $200 of personal protective equipment to the Enfield EMS. Last month, the Lions Club donated $400 in toiletries and undergarments and other clothing to the veterans home in Rocky Hill for their, their standout, I guess they call that, 2020. And more recently, the Lions Club of Enfield delivered over 3,000 pounds of food to the Enfield Food Shelf, to Loews and Fishes, to Little Sisters of the Poor, St. Joe's, and two agencies in East Windsor. I guess they're called Five Corners, Cupboard and Pauline Soup Kitchen. So, you know, thank you to the Lions Club of Enfield for your incredible community spirit. And I'm not too sure that Pam Townsend can hear me now, but the Lions Club did donate 25 wreaths last year and plans on doing the same again this year. If I could just take one more moment of your time, Mr. Mayor and members of the council.
You have the floor, sir. Go ahead. You have the floor.
Thank you, sir. I also want to recognize a teacher at Prudence Crandall School and a former student of mine, who's now an attorney, living in East Gramby. Ryan McCain, my former student at Fermi High, and Andrew Garza, our partners in the Connecticut Trial Firm. And every year, they donate money and supplies to teachers. And this program, they refer to as the Tremendous Teacher Award Program. And it goes just to that, to a tremendous teacher in Enfield, who they recognized for her excellence in the classroom. And you've got to understand that teachers oftentimes spend their own money purchasing supplies for their students. That tremendous teacher at Prudence Crandall is a teacher by the name of Melanie O'Connor. She applied for the donation. She was recognized as the tremendous teacher and she and her students received $500 worth of supplies from the Connecticut Trial Firm. And talking to Mrs. O'Connor, she said the kids had an absolute ball in her class, opening up those boxes and seeing all the supplies that were given to them. And I would also say that Prudence Crandall School, you might remember last year thanked Officer Lieutenant Parent, who was then on active duty in Afghanistan, through a Skype presentation and sent him gifts and cards thanking him for his service to the country. So we certainly have to be very proud of our teachers at our school and we live in an incredible community. And I just thank everyone for what you've done to make our community a wonderful community that it is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone in the council chambers? Counselor Riley?
I've been kind of holding off on saying what I'm about to say because we've just been in council chambers for not very long, so we haven't had counselor communications. But I've been working with a really incredible group of women with Kite from Asanaunta Community College, the Food Shelf, Stow, Head Start. And we've all put together, and it's on their website, it's on Enfield Kite website. It's a community resource guide for families. And we consistently have been updating it since we've been out with COVID. We've been consistently updating it with where you can find housing assistance, food assistance, daycare assistance, and, you know, like warming shelters, cooling shelters. So it's on Enfield Kite's website. I think it's enfieldkite.org. And, you know, if you're looking for help or you need help and you don't know where to go or who to ask or whatever, that's a good start to look there. And I just wanted to let you know that it was out there and we just keep continually updating it as we get updates.
Counselor Ungar?
Hi, greetings. I wanted to announce through Social Services that they have Choices Counseling. And for some people that don't know what Choices is, they will advise you about Medicare, Medicaid, and all the options that you have with health insurance. There's so much going on with that and a lot of people are still in the dark. And so right now, they have open enrollment and it's from October 13th to December 7th. And I've spoken with Jennifer Switolski. She's the coordinator of that. And also Will St. George. And they are just a wealth of information. They're wonderful, kind people and they simplify everything so that you can understand it. So anyone that has any questions about their health insurance, now's the time. You can contact them at Enfield Social Services and they're at 110 High Street and their phone number is 860-253-6403. I also wanted to mention about the Blue Book. A lot of people are still asking me questions about what is it and how can I get one? So it's really for seniors or adult children who have seniors as parents, get them this book. It's a wealth of information. The places that you can get it is at the Enfield Express, so you can drive through and pick it up, the libraries, Social Services, the Town Hall, to name a few. And so inside this booklet, it will give you addresses, emails, and all information. I'm going to name a couple of the topics here. It gives, it will tell you about the town offices, education, emergencies, financial counseling, social security, health, bereavement, hospital and nurses, home care, housing, leisure, legal, nutrition, safety, transportation, and volunteer information. So it's just chock full. If anybody would like to have this, it's available to you. So I advise you to get one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, any comments or questions, comments, excuse me? Counselor Hamler?
As Enfield businesses start to get back to normal, I'd like to be able to start announcing openings and changes and things. I heard that the Riverside Reptiles is now open on South Road. I haven't gone yet, but I'm looking forward to it. Also, Sunday, November 1st, at New Day Church on King Street, they took, they renovated the whole Namco building. It's beautiful. And they're going to be having a celebration on November 1st. So everyone's welcome to come and check it out. And I hope they will. Thanks.
Counselor Mueller?
I make a motion to suspend the rules and move items A1, B6, C1, E, F, G, and H to miscellaneous and proceed to vote.
Motion made by Counselor Mueller to suspend the rules and move the items to miscellaneous. It was seconded by Counselor Mangini. Any discussion or comments on the motion? Hearing none by show of hands, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, abstention, 11 in favor, zero against. Counselor Mueller, you have the floor. You all set? Anyone else have any comments? I'll be real brief. I got three quick ones or four quick ones. I just want to recognize, again, I think, Chris, you may comment this in your manager report, but I want to, I mean, I know it's, you know, they've taken a beating and rightfully so, but Eversource did a really good job at the storm a few weeks ago. They had crews here that night and they were all over town quickly and they were able to get, you know, a lot of, a lot of folks who lost power back on very quickly. So I got to give them kudos that they, you know, they made a real effort to be in Enfield that night as we got hit harder than, it was almost like a microburst that most towns didn't get. So I think Eversource deserves credit. Also want to give credit to Emilekar Cordova from the Grupo Mexican Americana Group, along with our partners down in the Mexican consulate from New York, who actually donated food, paid for, and then handed it out to members of the community in need. It was great to, again, as we build relationships with, you know, with members of, you know, other, you know, again, foreign consulates, I mean, coming to Enfield and helping out our community. They did a really nice job and I think they handed out over 300 bags of food, which is pretty cool. I just want to recognize, I know with everything going on, our high school athletes who are competing right now and they're doing their very best under very difficult situations. It's great to see the kids out there competing, even though maybe it's not what we're used to. And I certainly feel bad for our football players. I'm really hoping they get a chance to play in the spring. You know, it's, it's part of, especially if they're seniors, this is an important part of their high school experience. But I want to recognize the high school athletes who are out there competing and, again, doing the very best they can under difficult circumstances. And last, because we won't have a meeting before, I wish everyone a happy Halloween. And if you choose to go out, follow the guidelines. Hope your kids have a lot of fun, dressed up. And if you choose to turn your light on, again, follow the guidelines and hand out candy and enjoy what I think is one of the best, best holidays we have. And it's a Saturday night, so don't get too crazy and have some fun. Moving on, hearing that, we move on to Town Manager Report on item number nine. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I concur, Halloween's one of the most fun and wonderful holidays of the year. I would just make two comments. I thought that BNL's presentation and the work that the joint facility and our council liaisons have done over the last couple of years is remarkable. It is a great blueprint and a master plan to proceed from here to get some very important things accomplished that the town has wanted to do for many years. I will also say that Kasha, our Assistant Manager, Jeff Lenowitz, and Donald Nunes have been working on some little tweaks to it, updates. We had a meeting a week or so ago and within the confines of that master plan, a couple of properties that we now have access to that I think are going to aid us in the short term to accomplish some of those major goals within our budget, as Donna had said, which is very exciting, is the addition of the Enfield Express Building, which is in remarkable shape. And also our option that we have over at Santa Dalberg's with the potential of developing that. I think what I would say the only major tweak would be, I think, we'll be able to jettison many of the buildings they would like to, but because of our ability to have those two properties ready now, I think we can do, in addition to the planning and zoning and the beginning steps towards the very important consolidation of public works out at Moody and with Building and Grounds, that we can probably accelerate this process because we have access to those two properties. And I think there will be great cost savings. I would just say to you, I think, one little tweak, because it really wasn't known at the time, we didn't have the option at Santa Dalberg's and that ability to use that property or at the Express. But I will say, I think that perhaps we can put LeMania, being adjacent to the Strand, to a higher and better use for development, being adjacent to the freshwater pond. As you all know, you allocated over $500,000 to fix the spillway. We also are including a protection on the spillway, so hopefully we'll be able to do some recreation use on the spillway in a safe manner, which will be very advantageous and attractive to residential housing at the site of the LeMania and the Strand. So with that tweak, we're working very diligently with the plan with Jeff and Donald, as I say again, within the, within the umbrella of BNL's plan and the work by the joint facility. We hope in November to be able to do a Saturday morning and put that forth to the council because the savings and the reduction of those buildings would allow us to do it without great expense, therefore not needing referendums to be able to do it because of the great cost savings in the buildings we have at a very low cost with great savings. And I think that's something that's exciting because it isn't many years down the road. It's something we could probably embark on in the next budget. So stay tuned for that. Mayor, just to follow up, you are correct. It was very interesting, just coincidentally, the day of the little microburst in that windstorm, we had had a conference call, both the management and Chief of Police, myself and others with Eversource, sort of as a debrief to the last hurricane. And just, you know, amazingly, that afternoon, the microburst had hit. We had had a very good meeting with Eversource. We were very candid with them about the failings of the corporate structure, I think, in regard to their response overall to the state, but that we were very, very happy with our community customer relations, Representative Mr. Whitkos and also the Mr. Sarno, who was given to us also just for the town event, for they did a great job. I told them that they get an A. And of course, that hit that evening and they really stepped up. I will echo what you said, that some of our public works people were out on the road within minutes of the event. We had four or five crews from Eversource here within a half an hour. They said they had never seen a response like that ever. So we were happy with our relationship moving forward, I think, with Eversource. They, they're really, I think, trying to make improvements. They've said because of our experience with storms, the staff that we have in place, our IT capabilities, that a new program that they'll be rolling out for the winter to make it much more customer friendly for our residents, to know what crews are in town, where the outages are and the timeframe for repair, that we are eligible and will probably be one of the earlier towns that they will implement that hopefully in the next couple of months. So I'm excited to report that. And then lastly, I will just say that, as you know, there was a wonderful article in the Journal Inquirer about our farmers market and we had extended it through the month of October. We were there, many of us, on Sunday. We had a great outpouring, many, many vendors, probably over 65 again. And I would just say for those of you who haven't joined us or have been able to attend, please try to do it this coming Sunday from 10:00 to 2:00 on the Town Green. It's the last weekend of the year, but it was just a tremendous event. We thank everybody who helped and I encourage everybody to come that is able. And that's it for me.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the Town Manager? Any questions for the Town Manager? Chris, I just have one question and I know we chat about this, but I'd like the public to understand, because we've gotten a lot of emails and I know you responded or Lori responded. Can we just let the public know when it comes to 5G, when I know there's a lot of angst on what those antennas may or may not, you know, exuberate when it comes to radiology, you know, kind of really who controls that process? I know Lori is our town planner, will be meeting with other town planners in December, I believe is when the meeting will be, and discuss what towns can do as, you know, that technology gets rolled out. But I just want the people who have sent emails concerned about 5G really, again, I know, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's more really dictated by the federal government through the state, you know, down to the local level. And maybe at some point, we can maybe get a meeting with some, some folks at the state or federal level. But just want to make sure that people understand, you know, kind of where the town sort of lies in that process when it comes to any of these new antennas that may or may not be 5G in the near future.
Certainly, I know we have had inquiries and Lori will be putting something together more than she has done. We can share that on our website. We can share that on our website with the public, but you are correct, as in many of these areas of telecommunications and cable and solar, the state and federal government have preempted. We do have some limited input on, limited, on a limited basis, and will never keep us apprised of what our, you know, rights are, but they are limited, but we can put something together and get it out there.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any other questions for the Town Manager? Hearing none, we move on to item 10, the Town Attorney Report. Attorney Talberg, welcome, sir.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor. There is nothing to report publicly from the Town Attorney's Office this evening.
Any questions for the Town Attorney? Seeing none, move on to item 11, Report of Any Special Committees? Out in virtual, any reports of special committees? Shaking head, none. We have none in the council chambers. We move over to item 12, Old Business. On page 112A, 1 and 2, there is, there is nothing. We move to the top of page 2 under Old Business. Do I have a motion to remove from the table item 3, Enfield Beautification Committee?
So moved.
By Counselor Mueller. By Counselor Riley. All those in favor of removing from the table, by show of hands, or aye?
Aye.
There's 10 in favor, Suzanne, a zero against, to remove from the table. Item's been removed. This is a reappointment. Do I have a nominee, please?
Yes, Darren Ketchel.
Nominee is Darren Ketchel. Do I have a second? By Counselor Mueller, seconded by Counselor Sparazza. Do I have a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
By Counselor Mueller. Seconded by Counselor Ungeyer, or Counselor, Deputy Mayor Suzak. All those in favor of closing nominations, by show of hands, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, 10 in favor, zero against. Back to the main motion for the reappointment. Any other comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Deputy Mayor Suzak. Darren Ketchel. Counselor Ungeyer.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Darren Ketchel.
Counselor Hamler.
Four.
Counselor Keiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Darren Ketchel.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Sparazza.
Four.
There's 10 in favor, and again, no extensions.
Thank you, Suzanne. We move to item 4, under Old Business, Enfield Culture and Art Commission. Do I have a, do I have a motion to remove from the table?
So moved.
By Counselor Sikala, seconded by Counselor Mueller. All those in favor, by show of hands, removing from the table? Opposed, abstentions, we have 10 in favor, zero against, to remove from the table? Do I have a nominee, please?
Yes.
Counselor Sikala.
Samantha Nolan.
Nominee has been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Counselor Mueller. Samantha, nominee of Samantha Nolan, by Counselor Sikala, seconded by Counselor Mueller. Do I have a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
By Counselor Mueller, seconded by Counselor Hamler. All those in favor of closing nominations, by show of hands? Opposed, abstention, that's 10 in favor, zero against. Any discussion on the main motion? Hearing none, roll call, please, Suzanne.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Samantha Nolan.
Counselor Ungeyer.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Samantha Nolan.
Counselor Hamler.
Four.
Counselor Keiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Samantha Nolan.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Sparazza.
Four.
There's 10 in favor, and again, no extensions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Under item A, Old Business, items 5 through 10 remain on the table. We're moving, moving to item B, under Old Business. Town Manager Appointed, Council Approve. Run through 5, by Chris, I believe we have none. Moving to the top of, top of page 3, again, Town Manager Appointed, Council Approve, 6 through 16, again, I believe we have none. Moving on to item C, Appointments, P&amp;Z Commission Appointed, Council Approve, again, there are none. We move to New Business, item 13. There is no item A, Consent Agenda. Item B, Council Appointments by Town Council, again, there is none at this time. Moving over to top of page 4, under New Business, items 2 and 3 remain on the table. Item C, Appointments, Town Manager, Council Approve, there are none. Item D, P&amp;Z Appointed, Council Approve, there are none. We move to item E. Suzanne, keep me honest, we don't got to remove New Business, right? We can just bring it up for discussion?
That's correct.
Thank you very much. So item E, Discussion Resolution, Resolution waiving the bid requirements for body, body worn and in car, in car cameras. Sorry, one second, let me get to the, the resolution. Apologize for that. Whereas Enfield, the Enfield Police Department wishes to and is required to purchase and implement body worn and in car camera systems in accordance with Public Act 20-1, as passed by the Connecticut General Assembly in July 2020 Special Session, whereas the Enfield Police Department will need a nationally recognized and well-established vendor with adequate, with adequate infrastructure and proven reliability to provide this equipment and corresponding services. Whereas Axon is uniquely positioned as a national-level vendor of both body worn and in car camera systems, as well as required storage and support, whereas the Enfield Police Department currently does business with Axon, and they have always fulfilled obligations and commitments and set forth in existing contracts. Now therefore, be it resolved in accordance to Chapter 5, Section 8, Paragraph D of the Enfield Town Charter, the Enfield Town Council does hereby determine that it is against the best interest of the town to require competitive billing for body worn and in car camera systems submitted on October 19, 2020, by the Chief of Police, Arilick Fox.
So moved.
By Counselor Mueller. Seconded by Counselor Mangini. So Chris, I know Chief Fox is on, I don't know if you want to give a little preamble?
Yes.
Yeah, right ahead.
I would say, basically, it's, it's a group of the next items, E, F, G, 1 to waive the bid, the next resolution to authorize me to sign the agreement and purchasing, and then to, to basically transfer the funds, the initial amount of $327, $329. We had previously had the Chief of Police come in, he had gone over the five different vendors, he had chosen this one for a variety of reasons. We then had, we worked with the state, and basically John Wilcox determined the best way to proceed to finance this, so we would get the most reimbursement, if and when the state does reimburse. We were led to believe, in the legislation, the chief will touch on this, that the more upfront cost to purchase in the first year would give us a greater reimbursement rate, so John moved things so that we would be eligible for the most amount of money potentially. We are very confident this is the best vendor for, for a variety of reasons. There were some questions between the last meeting and this one that the chief has answered, also from IT in regard to storage, but every one of them is on the line to answer any questions the council may have, but I think this is important enough and significant enough and complex enough for the chief to give an overview and then be available for questions, and then, of course, Mr. Wilcox and Mr. Russell are also available.
Thank you, Chris. Welcome, Chief Fox, you have the floor, and go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. This has been a significant effort over the past several months, and the need to expedite this was really heightened from the events of this summer onward. I was very pleased when you originally asked for a debrief and a rundown on where we were as a department in regard to some of the concerns that were being expressed by government officials and members of the public. As you certainly will recall, with a quiet sense of pride in both the department at present and the department historically, we were able to share with you that we were at or above the curve on every single item that was being discussed, with this one exception. So at that point, we doubled down on our efforts to speak to different vendors. We spoke to a total of five of them, and then, as I reported to you, I believe, two meetings ago, in terms of a total package for in car cameras, body worn cameras, tasers, cloud storage, and the like, our recommendation to you was the Axon product, which is what leads us, leads us here.
Thank you, sir. John Wilcox, Director Finance, any comments before I open up the questions?
I have no questions. We did try to, to put the cost of the body worn cameras, and those are reimbursable from the state. I have not planned on any reimbursement from the state, as I figure when we know exactly what that reimbursement amount will be, it will go back into fund balance and replenish what we're taking out tonight, some of what we're taking out tonight.
Thank you, sir. All right, so I'll open up to the council floor. Counselor Sparazza.
Chief Fox, I think it's important for the public to understand that cameras were something that the police department, especially the rank and file, is something that they've wanted for a long time. We had cameras in the car, never had them, the body cams, and it's, it's a result of this police bill, but even without that, we think it's a valuable asset to provide to our officers. But I want the public to know that as part of the cost of these body cams and cameras in the car, there's a taser component that goes along with this. For the public that, that may not understand, I wonder if you could just elaborate a little bit on the use of tasers as a non-lethal option for our officers, and how that helps us in the use of force continuum, and that's all included in the price of this. Could you just comment on that, Chief, please?
Yes, sir, I'd be very happy to. Please allow me to preface this observation, and I hope this is self-evident, but it certainly bears repeating, that we make every effort in every encounter to avoid, to avoid the use of force whenever possible, and this goal has been stressed to and ingrained in our personnel in the way they carry themselves every day and how they've been trained, and there's no doubt that that is our expectation. And that further, we are very, very, very frequently successful in using positive interpersonal skills, event deconfliction, and any other tool that's at our disposal, literally or figuratively, to avoid the use of force. Having said that, unfortunately, there are instances where the nature of what we do does involve or does entail the use of reasonable physical force on individuals that are being charged, individuals that are being arrested, or individuals that we need to separate from other folks that they might otherwise be armed to. And I would encourage you, as the officers are encouraged, to think about every tool at their disposal as literally a tool on their bat belt. Tasers or electronic defense weapons are, are and have been very frequently the intermediate level tool of choice for law enforcement officers to utilize because they are very effective, and I won't say never, because there certainly have been some concerns that have been expressed, but they are very effective and, in the vast, vast majority of instances, a tool with no lingering side effects. What we have at present in terms of our taser inventory within the department are some tasers that are currently out of warranty. We have other tasers that are going to be going out of warranty in the very near future, and the program that's being made available through Axon is going to bring all of our tasers up to date and in warranty as part of this package, including replacement as necessary, including training cartridges and carry cartridges. This is an added incentive with this vendor, but a significant one of that.
So Chief, that, that piece alone, the taser component, will not require us to fund any future tasers, so how much is that approximately?
The, the training cartridges alone were, and I'm going to have to pull up the budget, I have it on my pile somewhere, but the training cartridges alone in this year's budget, I believe, were $26,000. So that is effectively coming off the top, if you will, in terms of the expense, and it'll be a cost savings in each year moving forward in the future. And then, of course, the, the carry cartridges on top of that, we have some, some light discussions underway about the possibility of making our, I just found it, $22,833 is training cartridges for this year, plus the carry cartridges, plus some discussion with the vendor about the possibility of making our taser instructor what we would call a master instructor, which would save us some training costs in the future as well.
Great. Chief Fox, could you just also tell us, in the past year, how many complaints our department received from the public or either internally or externally for excessive force?
I can get you the exact number, but I can tell you, it was, it was none to minimal. We have an extraordinary ratio of calls to service versus personnel complaints, and within the personnel complaints area, the area, the complaint of excessive use of force, and I'm flipping through my paperwork right now to try to find that for you, but it's, I can't tell you that it's nonexistent, but I can tell you that it's extraordinarily minimal. It is a fraction of a fraction of a fraction. As I recall in one of my earlier presentations, it was a decimal that began with, you know, .000, and then it moved out from there.
And that's a department with approximately 40,000 to 50,000 calls for service, correct?
Every single year, 24/7, 365, yes, sir.
And the last point, Chief Fox, is when we do have use of force reports, way before the police bill came into existence, our department required a separate use of force report to be written before the officer went home, was reviewed by the lieutenant, went to the captains for review, the deputy chief, and up to the chief, and we would look for trends every year. This was part of Kalia. I, I assume we're still doing that, correct?
We absolutely are doing it. It is part of our, it is part of our accreditation, and in a broader sense, it is our mission, and perhaps in the broadest sense, it is our commitment to this community.
So let me just, Chief Fox, I think people would be interested to know that there are a lot of parts of this police bill that are good, good, good things. The entire bill, I'm not a advocate of a lot of it, but as far as the cameras, I know there's now psychiatric exams required every two years. My only complaint is all these extra, extra measures are going to be funded not by the state of Connecticut, but, but the town of Enfield, and I know on the psychiatric exams, we're looking at $100,000 over five years. Am I correct?
The psychiatric exams will require 20% of the department every single year, because it's a five-year cycle, so over the course of time, yes, your number is accurate, and it's, and it's not, it's not a one and done, it's recurring in the future, plus the drug tests, plus the body worn cameras, plus the in car cameras. The expenses are notable under the legislation.
Yeah, and like I said, I am not opposing these, these measures. I think they're, they're appropriate, but I would like, at the end of, when it's all done, exactly how many hundreds of thousands of dollars it costs the town of Enfield to implement these, and like you said, it wasn't for one year, it's going forward. So, thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Any other questions then from the council floor? Anyone from out in virtual?
Yes, I do, please.
Go ahead, Counselor Mangini.
Chief Fox, thank you so much for your explanations, your presentation. I do want to address questions both you and John Wilcox. It is my understanding that we are able to receive a reimbursement from the state. Exact dollars, I'm not sure what they are, but at some point, will someone from town, be it John or Chief Fox, be researching to find out the dollars that we are able to be reimbursed? And at what point will that happen, so we know and we can budget that money back into your department, Chief? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate the opportunity to answer that as well. I have been in touch with the folks from OPM, including the woman who's currently in charge of the body worn camera reimbursement, in car camera reimbursement program, and I'll, I'll add in further details if you want, but here are the high points. Under the legislation from four years ago now, there was OPM money that was made available, and the reimbursement rate is 50%. They continue to operate at a 50% reimbursement rate, limited to in car camera systems that are more than 10 years old. Ours is not. It's close, but it's not. There's no reimbursement for the tasers, and there's reimbursement for the body worn cameras and first year storage costs. That grant that they are currently under is a reimbursement rate of 50%, only as long as that money is available, and they are running low on that money at present. A police accountability bill calls for reimbursement in a, in a separate pool of money that OPM is going to be raising through the sale of, the state's going to be raising through the sale of bonds, and that is a 30% reimbursement rate, unless one is a distressed municipality, and we are not, then it would be a 50% reimbursement rate, limited to those items that I just illuminated or illustrated a moment ago. As soon as we enter into the contract and as soon as we start writing checks, then we will write the grant application to OPM to garner as much of that money back as we can, but the variables are how much money OPM has left, and whether we can get in under the 50% current grant, or whether or not we'll be relegated, because as you can imagine, every other town is doing a mad rush as well, whether we'll be relegated to the 30% reimbursement that's coming in the future. And that, and that is the long explanation for why it's something, but we don't know how much.
No, I appreciate that. I just want to ensure, and I believe you will do this, and John as well, that we stay on top of it, so that we're not on the back end, that we are on the front end. on top of it, so that we're not on the back end, that we are on the front end. And I appreciate all your hard work, the work of our department. We have a stellar police department, hands down. We're very fortunate, we're very proud, and thank you for that.
Thank you. I appreciate the support.
Any other questions from anyone? Yeah, Chief, I got two questions for you. So, just a clarification, these are one-year, right, this is a one-year contract. Do we have to waive the bid every year because this, or is this a five-year contract where, again, and the cost will be similar each year? Right, so to be clear, this 300, you know, when we get to the money, the $300,000 is going to be a yearly cost, correct?
So, it's going to be less in the future, because after consultation with town staff, and I believe leadership was involved in this as well, I believe, we opted to front-load as much of the expenses as was permissible in order to increase the likelihood of a higher reimbursement rate in the first year.
Okay.
That's permissible.
Yeah.
So, this is recurring in nature, as Counselor Soprazza referenced earlier, with the drug testing and the mental health screenings. This is recurring into the future under the bill, but you will see lesser expenses in years two through five onward.
But may I answer your question directly, Mayor, and the town attorney has reviewed it, he could jump in. It's just a waiver this year for length of this contract, so we don't have to do it every year. The only change we made since we came back last time, as the chief indicated, was to have John front-load more of the costs, and we have a higher reimbursement in the first year, so we would be eligible, as Counselor Mangini suggested, to the highest amount available when they actually make the funds known to us. So, that's the only change. But we'll just waive it now, and then it'll be a five-year contract, and at that juncture, we'll review everything, and if you could go up to there, you might want to waive it again, but it'll all be revisited then. But it's one waiver for the length of the five-year contract, unless the town attorney thinks otherwise.
Okay, thank you. And Chief, this may be, I apologize, this is a silly question, but when you fill out the grant application, is there any weight given to communities that are already CLIA-accredited? Like Enfield?
I wish there was, sir. I do not believe that there is.
Okay, thank you.
At least I should say, there's no identification of that as a consideration within the Public Act.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Hearing unrolled, call please, Suzanne.
Ms. Suzanne. Four. Councilor Ungeyer.
Four.
Councilor Sikala.
Four.
Councilor Hemler.
Four.
Councilor Heiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Muller.
Four.
Councilor Riley.
Four.
Councilor Sparazza.
Four.
If there's a ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. We move on to new business, item F. Discussion resolution. Resolution authorizes the town manager to sign the Axon Master Services and Purchase Agreement. Be resolved that the Enfield Town Council authorizes the town manager to sign the Master Services and Purchasing Agreement with Axon Enterprise, Inc., subject to review and approval by the town attorney, submitted by the office of the town attorney on October 1, 2020. So moved. By Councilor Muller, seconded by Councilor Mangini. I mean, we just talked about this, Chris, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add?
Nope. I think we've covered it all.
Any questions from anyone? No. Hearing unrolled, call please, Suzanne.
Deputy Mayor Suzanne.
Four.
Councilor Ungeyer.
Four.
Councilor Sikala.
Four.
Councilor Hemler.
Four.
Councilor Heiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Muller.
Four.
Councilor Riley.
Four.
Councilor Sparazza.
Four.
If there's a ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving on to item G, under new business. Discussion resolution for request of transfer of funds for police department, $327,323. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made. To police services, technology equipment of $327,329. From police services, other equipment, an amount of $22,833. From general fund revenue, appropriated fund balance of $300,400. 490, 340, $4,496, sorry, folks, for a total of $327,329. Certified that the above stated funds are available as of October 1, 2020, by Director of Finance, John Wilcox, and approved by our town manager, Christopher Bronson. So moved. Moved by Councilor Mangini, seconded by Councilor Muller. I don't know, Chris or Chief, again, I think we just chatted about it, but anything else you'd like to highlight?
Not for me, sir.
Chief?
Not for me, sir.
Any questions for anyone? We'll start out in the virtual land. Any questions? No? Any questions here, folks in the town council? Councilor Sikala.
I just have one. So, I'm looking at this, where it's coming from and going to, and is it, does this mean that there's $22,000 in your current budget that you're able to put towards this?
John, can you answer that? I believe that is in regard to the existing account for the cartridges for the taser that we have.
Okay.
That we're going to allocate towards this. John, if I'm incorrect, please let me know.
That is correct, Chris. That's exactly what it was. We showed that we were using the money that we had previously budgeted for the taser, replacing cartridges for this.
Okay. Is there any other money in the police budget that could be found to pay for some of this?
No. I asked that, John asked that, the chief looked, but as you well know, the police budget, as all other town budgets, were pretty well scrubbed to keep a zero tax increase in the last budget, which was adopted.
Okay, thanks.
John, this may be a quick question, procedural. Next year, will this be in the capital part of the budget, or will it still be in the police budget, just from where it will be housed? More just question where it's going to be housed?
We could, I would probably put it in the police budget, because it is kind of a combination of data and taser equipment and data storage. So, that's probably where I'd put it, but we could put it into the capital budget as well. I think I'm leaning more towards police services.
Okay, just curious where we're going to house it. And really, the only, just from, I know you don't have to tell us exact dates, but just please keep us looped when we, A, purchase it, and when the officers will be equipped with the equipment. It would be nice to know.
The chief will keep us apprised. They do have a potential timeframe, but as he indicated, many departments are jumping outward, so it probably won't be as quickly as we like. But Chief, do you have an answer to that? I believe we discussed it. Should the timetable at least attend to one?
I will tell you that at one point, I was really hoping that we might be able to see this in November. I think that's optimistic.
Okay.
I think that's overly optimistic. We are doing a lot of the behind-the-scenes, at no cost, infrastructure work in the police department now, in order to be as ready as we possibly can be. And Axon has been extraordinarily dynamic about working quickly. As soon as it becomes available, I will make you aware, and we're more than happy to demonstrate the tools for you, if you'd like.
I would just, I will also add, Mayor and council, that in our last budget, we also had dedicated money to the next-gen communication system, which we are now training and transitioning on, which is a major undertaking, so it's good and fortuitous that we're integrating this pretty much at the same time. But as you know, we made real concerted efforts in the last couple of budgets to make sure that IT would be the central repository for the IT portions of expenditures, and that departments would transfer those to IT. So, we'll try to delineate that and keep it clear, but also, I concur with John, I think that for, just for it to be more readily understandable and transparent, since it isn't really a capital recurring, such as a road or a building, it probably would be more appropriate for us to house this within the police department, so when people look, they can see what the expenditure is. We'll look at that during the upcoming budget.
No problem. And Chief, sorry, one last question, and so, we will have procedures, either they're already in place or will be in place, and how this will be worked by, so how the department will, you know, being already CLIA-accredited, so I think folks just maybe, I don't know if you want to comment on, you know, kind of the procedures or the, what would you want to use? Standards that we're going to be following, and when, any use of these cameras? Especially, sorry, go ahead.
There is a statewide model policy, the first iteration of which I was involved in drafting in my previous life, the second iteration of which was just approved by the Police Academy, the Post Council, late last week, and I received it today. What we are doing is taking that document, we are comparing it to our current in-car camera policy, because we may have instances where we're being even more restrictive under our current policy, which is okay. And I'm melding those two documents together, and then I need to sit down with union leadership and negotiate some portions of it with them, but it is at present an extremely robust model policy that we are working from, that is in standard recognition.
Appreciate that explanation. I think it was clear that we actually may, I mean, I'm glad you said that. We actually may be more restrictive than what we're even, it just goes to show that, hopefully, the guidelines that we follow in the town under the police department. So, I appreciate that explanation.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? Hearing unrolled, call please, Suzanne.
Deputy Mayor Suzanne.
Four.
Councilor Ungeyer.
Four.
Councilor Sikala.
Four.
Councilor Hemler.
Four.
Councilor Heiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Muller.
Four.
Councilor Riley.
Four.
Councilor Sparazza.
Four.
If there's a ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving on to item 14, items for discussion. Item A1 has been moved to miscellaneous. Under B, under items for discussion, items B1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 remain on the table. Item B6 has been moved to miscellaneous. Item B7, again, stays on the table. Item B8 stays on the table. C1's been moved to miscellaneous. Appointments, item D, P&amp;Z, commission-appointed, council-approved, we have none. We move on to item E. F, G, and H been moved to miscellaneous. We move over to item 15, miscellaneous. Okay, we have the consent agenda. Item A1, and it is request to transfer funds to, for, funds for youth and family services, Amplify Grant of $5,684.55. It's been moved to miscellaneous. Do I have a motion to approve? Oh, actually, I'm sorry, I got to read it. I got to read it. Sorry, one second. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made. To youth and family services, Amplify Grant of $5,684.55, from the Youth Services Amplify Grant of $5,684.55. Certified the above funds are available on October 13 by our Director of Finance, and approved by our town manager. So moved. By Councilor Muller.
Second.
By Councilor, Deputy Mayor Suzak. Again, it's on a consent agenda. Any concession? Hearing unrolled, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? We have 10 in favor, zero against.
It went out. Well, there.
There we go. Technology at its very best. Who are we going to, we'll blame Deputy Mayor Suzak for that one. Everyone back online in virtual? Say hi? All right.
Yep, we're here.
All right, thank you. All right, we move on to item B6. Historic District Commission, a reappointment of Marie Triano. Do I have a nominee, please?
I'd like to nominate Marie Triano.
By Councilor Mangini, nomination made. Second. Seconded by Councilor Ungeyer. Do I have a motion to close nominations? So moved. By Councilor Muller.
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Suzak. All those in favor, closing nominations, by show of hands. Opposed, abstentions? There are nine in favor, zero against for closing nominations. Any discussion on the main motion? Hearing unrolled, call please, Suzanne.
Deputy Mayor Suzanne. Marie Triano. Councilor Ungeyer.
Four.
Councilor Sikala.
She stepped out, Suzanne.
She stepped out.
Oh, thank you. Councilor Hemler.
Four.
Councilor Heiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Marie Triano.
Councilor Muller.
Four.
Councilor Riley.
Four.
Councilor Sparazza.
Four.
If there's a ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Under miscellaneous, item C, town manager appointed, council approved. Item 1, Housing Code of Appeals, a reappointment of Richard Suzak. Do I have a motion to, nominee? So moved. By Council, do I have to make a nominee?
Richard Suzak.
Nominee made. Do I have a second? Seconded by Council Sparazza. Do I have a motion to close nominations? So moved. By Council Muller.
Second.
Seconded by Council Riley. All those in favor of closing nominations, by show of hands. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? We have nine in favor and one abstention. Do I have any further comments on the main motion? Hearing unrolled, call please, Suzanne.
Deputy Mayor Suzanne.
Abstained.
She abstained.
Yes. Councilor Ungeyer.
Four.
Councilor Sikala, is she there?
I am, four.
Councilor Hemler.
Four.
Councilor Heiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Richard Suzak.
Councilor Muller.
Four.
Councilor Riley.
Four.
Councilor Sparazza.
Four.
If there's a ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving on to item E, under miscellaneous. Request for transfer of funds to close fiscal years 2020. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer referred to as Attachment A is hereby made. Certification, I hereby certify the funds stated in Attachment A are available as of October 14, 2020, created by John Wilcox, our Director of Finance. Do I have a motion to approve? So moved. By Council Muller.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Chris or John, any comment? This is an annual, I don't know if you want any comments?
It's an annual housing matter pursuant to the charter, and John is available to answer any questions.
All right, John, before I open up, any comments or question, I mean, any comments? Excuse me?
I really have none. I don't, this is, like, as Chris said, and you said, this is an annual thing, you know, with due to changes in employees' healthcare elections, things like that, union contracts that are signed during the year. We sometimes have monies that need to be increased in budget in certain organizations. Some of the issues that also happen are retirements. We have a couple of long-term employees retire this year, so things like that happen.
Got it, thank you, sir. Any com, I'll open up the virtual, any questions for John? Seeing shaking head, any questions for John in the council chambers? Hearing unrolled, call please, Suzanne.
Deputy Mayor Suzanne.
Four.
Councilor Ungeyer.
Four.
Councilor Sikala.
Four.
Councilor Hemler.
Four.
Councilor Heiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Muller.
Four.
Councilor Riley.
Four.
Councilor Sparazza.
Four.
If there's a ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving on to item F, under miscellaneous. Discussion resolution, resolution authorizing the town manager to enter into an agreement with Connecticut Children's Alliance for the Pathways to Prevention Grant, whereas Alliance for the Pathways to Prevention Grant. Whereas the Town of Enfield Family Resource Center has received a grant from the Connecticut Children's Alliance. And whereas Connecticut's Children Alliance distributes Connecticut's share of the federal community-based child abuse prevention funds following the federal fiscal year. Resolve that the Town Manager has authorized to sign the Connecticut Children's Alliance Pathways to Prevention Grant contract, subject to review and approval by the Town Attorney, in an aim on behalf of the Town of Enfield and to fix the corporate seal. Be it further resolved that because of the funding, because the funding follows the federal fiscal year ending September 30th, 2021, the Finance Department will appropriate any remaining funds at the end of the town's fiscal year and the next fiscal year. Submitted on October 19, 2020 by Cindy Guerrero, Director of Social Services.
So moved.
But, motion made by Councilor Mangini, seconded by Councilor Mueller. I know, Chris, I know, I think Cindy's here.
Cindy is on this item and the next. It's basically for me to enter into the agreement and then to transfer and spend the funds. It's $25,000 received to prevent child abuse and neglect. Cindy, would you like to give a little overview of it and then accept any questions the council might have?
Welcome, Cindy. You just name and title, and you have the floor.
Cindy Guerrero, Director of Social Services for the Town of Enfield. Thank you. I am excited to say this is a new source of funding for our Family Resource Center. I really want to give recognition to Amy Morales, our Division Head, who had the eye to see this and thought about connecting work that's already being done and bringing in additional resources to do it. The Connecticut Children's Alliance is an umbrella organization for Prevent Child Abuse America, Connecticut's chapter. They put out an RFP back in September, looking for innovative and replicable approaches to promoting safe, stable, nurturing childhoods. Our Family Resource Center has a model of embedding Circle of Security, a parenting education program, into pediatrician offices. This application was one of only two awards made in the state. We'll be partnering with Kite in the implementation of the grant. Some of you may recall last fall that Kite convened a table of community people that were interested in proactively increasing the social and emotional well-being of young children in Enfield. One of the results of that convening was it made way for the Family Resource Center to participate in a pilot program for $1,000 funded by the Children's Health and Development Institute to move from concept of working within the pediatrician offices into implementation. The local pediatricians' practice staff were trained by our Family Resource Center staff in how to conduct Circle of Security for their patients. And this approach is important because it really reduces barriers to accessing services and supports that parents would need and having that occur through an existing trusted relationship that a parent has with their child's doctor. So based on the success of that small pilot, the Family Resource Center is ready to take this pilot into that next level of implementation and expansion. The grant will allow for training of staff, facilitation of fortified groups through, excuse me, throughout the year. And also built into this grant is an outside evaluation that will really provide the information around the efficacy of replication in Enfield and beyond, which is something that the Connecticut Children's Alliance is going to be looking for.
Thank you. I will open up to any questions from anyone virtually. See you shake your heads? Okay. Anyone questions for anyone in the council chambers? Cindy, I have one question. Just curious, so if, if the staff is trained and they find unfortunate child, they feel maybe vulnerable, you know, or getting, being abused, who do they refer, you know, the, so does this grant have a, so again, using the word pathway, for the reference of where it goes and who, is it, you know, DCF? Or what about, I mean, you know, again, child first that came into town? Is there some sort of coordination between the various programs that we've, you know, we have in town, you know, to help the child?
So I just kind of separate out some of the issues. This, the Connecticut Children's Alliance is really about primary prevention.
Yeah.
And so educating parents on how best to promote the well-being of their child. So that'll be the focus of this grant. We definitely keep track of all of the different supports and services to families of young children, child first being one of them. If there was a pediatrician in their staff who had any concerns around child abuse, then they are mandated reporters and would report that to the Department of Children and Families.
All right.
I do think it's important also to mention that the Department of Children and Families is a huge supporter of the Circle of Security model and has brought it as an international model that they helped bring into Connecticut. So.
That's great.
We all hope to prevent.
No, I agree. And just curious, I may have made this an unfair question, but with the pandemic, we certainly heard across the country that the, there's been an increase in abuse. I'm hoping we haven't seen that in Enfield. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but kind of what have you folks have seen, or maybe it's, hasn't, you know, just without being too, you know, detailed, what you folks have seen. This is, is this really a timely grant for, you know, the longer this drags out?
Yes, it's a very timely grant. I think what we're seeing across the state, and Enfield's not different, is the, the population that does most of the reporting on child abuse and neglect are school personnel.
Right, right.
And so if kids are not in school, there's, some kids are going to get, potentially fall through the cracks. So we're keeping an eye and ear around what's going on in the community, working with our partners in the school system as they get back into, you know, being in person. But I don't have specific numbers.
Okay, no, I appreciate it. I think it's an important point for people to understand. So I appreciate you mentioning that. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call please.
Deputy Mayor Suzanne.
Four.
Councilor Ungeyer.
Four.
Councilor Secala.
Four.
Councilor Hemler.
Four.
Councilor Kiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Mueller.
Four.
Councilor Riley.
Four.
Councilor Sparazza.
Four.
Is there any favor, none against, no abstentions?
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving on to item G, under miscellaneous, Discussion Resolution, Request for Transfer of Funds for Family Resource Center Pathways to Prevention Grant of $25,000. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter. The following transfer is hereby made. To Family Resource Center, $25,000 from the Family Resource Center of the FRC OEC Pathways to Prevention Grant of $25,000. Certification that these funds, stated funds are available as of October 19, 2020 by the Director of Finance, John Wilcox.
So moved.
By Councilor Mueller.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Mangini. We just had an explanation. I don't know if anyone has any other comments or questions? Anyone out in the virtual world? No? Any comments or questions here? Hearing none, roll call please, Suzanne.
Deputy Mayor Suzanne.
Four.
Councilor Ungeyer.
Four.
Councilor Secala.
Four.
Councilor Hemler.
Four.
Councilor Kiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Mueller.
Four.
Councilor Riley.
Four.
Councilor Sparazza.
Four.
Is there any favor, none against, no abstentions?
Thank you, Suzanne. Under H, under miscellaneous, Discussion Resolution, Resolution Authorizing the Town Manager to Enter in and Sign the Amendment to Lease with Option to Purchase with the Opera House. Whereas the Town and the Opera House Players, Inc. entered into a two-year lease with option to purchase for 100 High Street. Whereas the term of lease expires on December 31, 2020. Whereas the parties wish to extend the term of lease for an additional one-year period commencing January 1, 2021 and ending December 31, 2021. Now therefore be it resolved, the Town Manager Christopher David Bronson is authorized to enter in to and sign the amendment to lease with option to purchase with the Opera House Players, Inc., in the name on behalf of the Town of Enfield, subject to review approval by the Town Attorney. Submitted on October 9, 2020 by our Town Attorney's Office.
So moved.
By Councilor Mueller. Seconded by Councilor Mangini. Chris, I mean, I think, or Kasha, I don't know.
Well, I would just say, Kasha has been dealing with the Opera House Players. The council had some very good questions in regard to the renewal, and the Town Attorney has reviewed it. We've answered all the questions. We had a good presentation from the Opera House Players. I think it's a very mutually advantageous relationship. They are committed to the town. We are committed to helping them. I think that it's in everybody's best interest to recommit for a year and see where we are. Obviously, COVID-19 has thrown a monkey wrench into the works of them doing live performances, but they are still working very hard to raise money and to restore High Street. I think they have good strides towards that. They've done some great quality performances at the Annex. I think they're a great partner. I think they're going to be a great gem in the renovation and rehabilitation of Thompsonville. So I enthusiastically support it. I think the council does. And let's see where we are in a year. But I think both sides really want to see this work for the benefit of not only the Thompsonville area, but for the whole town. And we talked earlier about culture and bringing those things to town. I think this would be a real feather in our cap. They're a really dedicated and talented group of people. And if you have any questions on specifics, Kasha, would you like to add anything? Because you've been dealing with them. But they're really a fine group of people, and I think this is a good move.
Thank you, sir. Kasha, our Assistant Town Manager, I know you've been working on this, so your floor is yours. Do you have any comments?
I don't have anything to add. I think Chris summed it up perfectly. Thank you.
Thank you both. Any questions from anyone out on virtual? See you head shaking? Any comments here? Councilor, Councilor Hemler, excuse me.
I don't have any questions. I just have a comment. I do know that they, the Opera House Players is excellent for Enfield, and I'm definitely in support of it. They are working very hard. The good news, I mean, it's been very difficult for everybody with the pandemic, especially them, because they can't have any of their shows. But the Governor just announced today that he's got a pile of money for arts, and I, and I hope that they'll apply, and I'm sure they will, because it'll help a lot. So I just hope that everyone will also be in support of it. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just say, Mike, I'll just interject, that I think that's wonderful. We'll leash Nelson towards that grant money. And I think it's just wonderful that the Governor was down in Thompsonville and actually walked in. We talked about the Opera House Players. He saw it. He was impressed. So we'll pursue that. I would thank you for sharing, Kelly. Perhaps Nelson was on it, but he certainly, and our staff meeting tomorrow, tomorrow will be made aware of it, and he'll pursue that, whatever funding we can possibly help get for the Opera House Players.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments from members of the council? Hearing none, roll call please, Suzanne.
Deputy Mayor Suzanne.
Four.
Councilor Ungeyer.
Four.
Councilor Secala.
Four.
Councilor Hemler.
Four.
Councilor Kiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Mueller.
Four.
Councilor Riley.
Four.
Councilor Sparazza.
Four.
Is there any favor, none against, no abstentions?
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving on to item 16, Public Communications. I don't like to speak for the public at this point. Welcome. Right at the chair. Make sure that light's on and the microphone, and just your name and address, and you have three minutes. You're welcome to speak.
Three minutes.
Yeah, your name and address, and you're welcome.
Got it?
Thank you.
My name is Caroline Coctella, and I own the property at 5 Main Street in Enfield. My brother and I had sent a letter, an email this weekend to all the council members asking for reconsideration of the design of the South River Street Bridge. And we did that based on the meeting from May 6, 2019, where several situations were changed. We no longer have a bike path. We, that has been abandoned by City Council. The railroad station has been moved to what I thought it should have been, from the west side to the east side of the track, and it's only a platform. And three, the most serious issue is that I, my family did an independent title search. And we asked for, which says we own the street. The City Council hired a consultant, a surveyor, that said there was an encroachment by Amtrak on half the street, and therefore they had to destroy my house and half of my brother's yard. Well, I did a FOIA request to Amtrak, and that letter shows that there is no encroachment there. And so if you look at what Mark Byrne said on May 6, 2019, he said he could still redesign the road. I don't care about the bridge. The bridge has to be done, and I know it. But he can redesign the road to be able to do effectively work without destroying my house, that's been there for at least 77 years old, years, because that's how old I am, versus, and then taking my brother's yard and destroying our whole property. We're the only decent property on Main Street right now. If you walk up Main Street, it looks like a hellhole, frankly, to me. We got across from Diana's, that burnt-out thing that looks like it's been looted. And, and I don't believe that trying to destroy the only house on Main Street and the property in a good location is going to help Thompsonville anymore. Okay? I mean, I live near the boat landing. I would recommend to close the boat landing off at night, from dawn to dusk, just like most cities do all over the country, so that people aren't going in there that might be doing illicit stuff. And, but I thought that my letter would be read today, but I'm very upset with City Council. And I worked in government 40 years. I just feel that we should have at least been given a consideration to have our title searcher, who is probably one of the best in the state, meet your surveyor and discuss this. Because I think that the surveyor that you got through a consultant contract is incorrect. Based on what I got from Amtrak, in two weeks, they gave me an answer. And, and I don't see the encroachment. And the whole reason why they wanted to take down my parents' house is they said there was an encroachment, and I don't see it.
Let me give you another three minutes. Go ahead, keep going. Go ahead. Yeah, keep going. Sorry, keep going.
No, I'm okay. I'm just asking for reconsideration of council to not destroy my house. I don't know if you have to re-vote for it or what. I don't know if, I'm not against the bridge. You've got people living under the bridge, you know, for a couple of months already. It's like their own little private home. It is crazy what has happened to this town. And, and I think that I do not believe you can re-resurrect everything. It's probably going to cost a million and a half to do the abatement and encapsulation of the one building. You paid half a million dollars for the casket company. Last week, I had kids throwing stuff off the roof. I was worried about them. But, you know, I don't know what to do. Do I call the police, have the kids arrested? I don't know what to do anymore. So we did tell them about the breach on the east side of the track. I don't know if it's been fixed yet. Because the young kids, I don't even want to say they're kids, they're young adults, are going in there. I think the kids were throwing stuff off the top. And if a car went by, then it would have been the town's liability, just like the people under the bridge. Town's liability if something happens to them. So that's all I have to say. I am just asking for reconsideration, and at least to work with us and not stonewall us. You know, the state's saying that they can't have a meeting with the surveyor because of COVID. That's absurd. You know, you're having Zoom meetings right here. And, and then have the new attorney tell us, forget about it. I'm not going to forget about it. For the last breath left in me, I will fight this. Because I don't believe it is the correct thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I can give you, I can give you another three minutes if you have anything. Appreciate your comment. I'll give you another three minutes if you have anything else.
No, I just want reconsideration of taking down the damn house. Move it. Move it 100 feet. I don't care what you do, but at least talk to us about it. Even Commissioner Bosco said that in the, in the meeting, page 11 of the minutes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm not mad at all of you. I just think you were given erroneous information for your vote, or inaccurate. I don't want to say, maybe the surveyor wasn't that good, but it was inaccurate information. Because I got an answer from Amtrak in two weeks that they had no encroachment. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sorry I came in late.
No.
I was listening at the beginning. I didn't hear anything said. Oh, I figured I'd heard it from up.
Thank you.
Thank you, honey. Thank you, mom. I know y'all do a good job. For, for a lackless respect, probably. But no money either.
Declare public communications closed. Item 17, Council Communications. Any council have anything? We'll start in the virtual land, anything?
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Any councils, any comments or questions? Hearing none, declare council communications closed. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Council Mueller, seconded by Council Sparazza. All those in favor, by show of hands. Say aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone. Thank you. Again, have a happy Halloween, everyone. Safe and happy Halloween, and have some fun.
Good night.